Call to order, City Commission meeting of Tuesday, August 28, 2018. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item is the Order of Business. Ms. Carlson, any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Yes, there is a few changes. In Item Three, there will be an addition to the reports of an Odyssey update that will be given by Attorney Murtha. In Item Five-B will be removed. That's the N-D-D-O-T. And then in Item Eleven, there'll be a third executive session on a Windboyd Borough And that would be all the changes that I have.
Thank you for the changes. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the Order of Business? Now I look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business with changes and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The Order of Business is approved. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything in the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss? Hearing no discussion on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda with a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have multiple timetable items starting at 4:55 this evening, so we'll move right into the non timetable agenda. And the first item up is our administration and finance, and we have a landscape ordinance, and that will be handled by City Attorney Murtha.
Thank you, President Decker, members of the Commission. This is the second reading for, I should say, second official and final reading hopefully for the landscape ordinance, number 1651 pursuant to the discussion and direction given by the Commission at the last meeting. I'll just go over some of the changes that were requested and incorporated. At the last meeting, Commissioner Steiner specifically asked for there to be some sort of exemption for individuals that might have difficulty complying with the requirements of the ordinance. So I think the examples given were if somebody was elderly or otherwise, or may have a disability such that this would be a hardship upon them. So in an effort to make this, make the intent of the suggestion as applicable to as many people as there might be that has a, that have a hardship, the language being suggested is that an individual requesting and receiving a reasonable accommodation from the city in accordance with the City of Dickinson's Title VI Plan relating to the requirements of this chapter would, could potentially qualify for an exemption, and they just have to make that request. So the City of Dickinson already has a Title VI Plan, and what that enables individuals to do is any member of the public who feels that they need an accommodation due to a qualifying disability or other circumstances that are specifically applicable to them can download a, or get in, I believe, any of our lobby areas, a request form, and that form is just submitted to the city, it's reviewed, and then can be, it can notify the city, basically put them on notice that this, there's an issue here, this person is asking for an accommodation. And so basically what this ordinance would be doing is acknowledging we already have that mechanism in place to accommodate individuals and direct them to the appropriate place to request that accommodation. So it would be, it's more broadly applicable, but I think adequately addresses your concern.
Exactly the way we wanted. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then the other change that was made that had been discussed was under Section Four, the requirements for the number of trees on the lot, which was reducing it to one tree anywhere on the lot. And so that change has been made in Section Four, minimum of one tree on a lot. And I believe we also had to make a slight change farther down, or another provision, to make that, make sure that that was consistent, that it was one tree on a lot. So those, those changes have been made, but that is, that is the sum total of the changes, so I'd be looking for your approval this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha on the ordinance 1651? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on 1651.
Move to approve ordinance 1651?
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on 1651? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 1651, motion is approved. Next up is our ATV ordinance, City Attorney Murtha.
Thank you, President Decker, members of the Commission. This is also a second reading for ordinance number 1658 relating to updates to both the open bottle law and ATV ordinance law, to make these, just as a brief recap, to make these provisions more consistent with state law in terms of the penalties that are applicable. The only change from the last reading to this reading was to specifically remove as an infraction, driving an ATV while, while also having a firearm with you, that is not something that's specifically penalized under state law. It was, it was an infraction under city code only, and after discussion, the city, the City Commission requested that that requirement be removed, and it has been. Otherwise, everything else remains the same.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha on 1658? And we did have the public hearing?
Yes.
Last meeting? So there are no questions, I would, for staff or comments, I would look for a motion on 1658.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, 1658.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 1658, motion is approved. We'll move on to Human Resources Code. City Attorney Murtha?
Thank you, President Decker, members of the Commission. This is for first reading and public hearing for a new ordinance, and the theme of, these are, these are updates to the Human Resources Code. It's in Chapter 29 of the Dickinson City Code. The theme of these updates is that they were all prompted by the desire to transfer to an electronic timekeeping system, not, it doesn't matter what electronic timekeeping system it is, it's just any electronic timekeeping system, because as we started to try to implement that change, we recognized that there were discrepancies in our HR code which caused confusion or, and/or a lack of clarity when trying to program a system to be consistent. So I'll just briefly go over these. This ordinance has already been before the Civil Service Commission, who recommends approval of these changes. The first, and perhaps the, the primary motivator for, for this review relates to, under Section One, 16.2, the emergency call out and special scheduled time pay provision. What had, what had happened is previous, prior to January 1st of this year, this read differently, and it provided for emergency call out or time and a half pay for any time an individual had an extension of shift. And that had been described as daily overtime. And it's my understanding, even though I wasn't here, when the HR code was previously reviewed, the Commission wanted to get away from daily overtime. However, beginning in January 1st, when this was implemented, there was a recognition that the language lacked clarity, because there was, so for example, what would happen is if somebody was at home and they were scheduled to come on at 6:00 a.m., but were called into work at 4:00 a.m., that would be a call out. However, if somebody was at work until 6:00 p.m. and a emergency occurred, be that emergency in fire, police, or public works, and they were directed by their supervisor to stay on, that was not considered a call out, even though it was an emergency, it wasn't prompted, this wasn't just extra time to fill out reports or anything, they were required to stay on, again with less than 24 hours notice, it was deemed a shift extension. And we realized that there, the ordinance did not specifically address that discrepancy between, did you have to actually be off of a shift for the emergency call out to apply? Or could there be times when there was an emergency immediately after your shift that made you require to stay? The impact this had for, and it was especially impactful, I think, to the police department, was that in an emergency call out situation, you're guaranteed that time. So at the end of, so PD runs on an 80-hour over two-week schedule. If you had, if you were taking vacation later on in your pay period, but you had emergency, an emergency call out, you would still get recognition that overtime. If, however, if it was deemed a shift extension, all that would happen was that your vacation was reduced by that time. You wouldn't actually get that overtime pay. And the difficulty as, that was communicated at the, to the Civil Service Commission, especially, again, because of the 80-hour schedule for the Dickinson Police Department, was that officers weren't actually able to use their vacation time, because that extra time was getting offset within their pay period, and because of all the many, due to the number of holidays, holidays also don't count toward that, toward overtime pay within that 80-hour, that almost half of their shifts during the course of a year included a holiday due to how it was spread. And so they were accumulating vacation and never able to use it, and never getting recognition for that extra time that they put in. And, and so this was modified to reflect, and again, I don't want to just limit the observations to the police department, there were ramifications to public works as well as fire, any of the, any of the shift workers that could be called in in an emergency where inequities could result. So this was modified to specifically clarify that it was possible for an emergency call out to occur, even if somebody was on a shift and needed to stay because of the emergency, but that emergency would be determined by the employee's manager. So again, it would not apply to situations in which somebody just had to catch up on paperwork, there was no emergency. But if a call came in, or a snowstorm happened right at the end of somebody's shift, and they were required to stay, then it could be deemed the emergency call out. So that is, that was the reason for the, the change. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this particular provision, or invite the Commission to ask for comments from either Chief Seabock, Chief Dossinger, or Directors Erhoff with regards to impacts to their department.
Any questions for City Attorney Murtha? Commissioners wish to hear from Chief Dossinger, Chief Seabock, or Directors Erhoff? If not, the ordinance number on this would be 1660, if I'm correct?
I believe so.
1660, and this is...
Would you like me to go through the remainder of the changes?
Sure, if you could.
The remainder of the changes basically were to clarify how items were going to be calculated, again, which we needed to do to be able to consistently enter it into a timekeeping program. So for example, under Section Two, acknowledging that under shift differential compensation, that that would be included with emergency call out compensation if it were applicable. Under Section Three, this was a, this was a clarification that actually made the code compliant with what in practice we had been doing, which is that the accrual hours for vacation or other leave pay accrued on a 26th pay period year, so as opposed to a 24th pay period year. It didn't, so it wasn't actually an eight-hour per month accrual, it was a per pay period accrual. And so the numbers in column one were inaccurate in light of the 26th pay period accrual. And likewise, the annual accrual in eight-hour, in eight-hour workday. So this, this table was updated to reflect what was actually happening and how, both in current practice and how it would be done electronically. It doesn't change the amount of accrual that anyone has, it simply reflects what the current, current practices. With regards to Section Four, the charge to vacation leave, this really, the vacation time will be taken in 15-minute increments. Well, when moving to an electronic timekeeping system, it's not necessary to round to that extent. So say, for example, somebody only needed to use 20 minutes. It seemed unfair to make them round up to a full half hour, even though they only needed 20 minutes of leave, and with electronic timekeeping, we could get that specific. So that was, it was changed to refer to actual time taken, and there was language in there with, that was preexisting related to fire suppression personnel and their 207K exemption. And we noticed that, that that was there for vacation leave, but then under Section Five, that same language was not there for sick leave, even though, again, it was done exactly the same way. So this, again, was a clarification to reflect what the current practices, so that was placed, that language was added under Section Five. With regards to bereavement leave, this was modified to reflect the fact, again, current practice, but to reflect the fact that for those individuals working shift work, their shift may be more than eight hours, they could be 12 hours. And if someone is going to take bereavement leave, they're not going to take eight hours of leave and come in on a day of a funeral and then come in and work four hours. It's going to be for a shift. And so it was changed to reflect working days. So whatever the standard working day of that individual was, was what the bereavement leave was going to be. And again, the Section Seven, the work on a holiday, was just clarified to acknowledge how this, how this pay was going to be calculated, and this is how it is calculated now, it's how it would be entered and calculated into a electronic timekeeping program. So that summarizes the changes, and staff would request approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha or staff in the Human Resource Code? This is a first reading of 1660. So since commissioners have no questions for staff, I will open it up to the public. There is anybody from the public that would wish to comment on ordinance 1660, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns, or if you approve of it, disapprove of the changes to the Human Resource Code. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing, and I would look, commissioners, if there's any further discussion, comments on 1660. If not, then I would look for a motion.
Move to approve first reading of 1660.
We have a motion to approve, 1660.
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. First reading of 1660 is approved. We have a little bit of time, we'll move on to a financial lease for compaction trailers, and that will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. President, commissioners. And we have a financial lease for compaction trailers for the recycling program, and just so, it's out there that five requests of the local financial institution was requested for their financing of that, and then we received three back, and through the following three, we base it on the interest rate that we receive on the financial lease, and upon that, we are recommending the American Bank Lease Company for these two trailers.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions on the lease and the percentage, the interest rate for Mrs. Carlson or staff? Not, I'd look for a motion on the financial lease for the compaction trailers for the recycling program.
Mr. President, make a motion to accept American Bank Center's proposal for the compaction trailer lease.
We have a motion to approve the lease with American Bank, and a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved for the financial lease. I think, Mr. Mori, we can, we can probably start, get a few minutes into this financial statement.
Thank you, President Decker, members of the Commission. So starting with, with what you've received in your packet, we'll open up with our treasurer's report. So starting with our treasurer's report, you're not going to see any changes, or any major changes, I should say, from the last time we did this report. We're consistent with where we were the last quarter. So as mentioned, you won't see any major changes. Moving on to our investments, this is the 35.5 million that you saw in your packet as well. We just want to remind the Commission to, we have contributed three quarters of our pension contributions to this point in the year. Our final pension contributions were made at the beginning of August. So once our August financial report is presented, you'll see the rest of those pension contribution numbers as well. And then jumping in with the 1% sales tax. So just a reminder to the public, I know this question comes up a lot, but we're, we're showing these numbers as we receive them. We do record these on a two-month leg. So for example, when we receive sales tax for the museum in December, we submit those reports to the state in January, and actually receive the money in February. So that's why, when it comes to us, it's always on a two-month leg. So with that, you can see July is down significantly from 2017. The red line is 2018 numbers. So we're down about 20% in July of 2018 from where we were in July of 2017. We did have a large increase, though, in May. You can see we jumped up from 387 to 549. The reason for that, I'm not sure exactly why we had that big jump, but overall, we are ahead $75,000 through seven months compared to where we were at this point in 2017.
Harburger's was only at 20% at that point. Now they're at 9.
So this slide here, again, a reminder to the public, so the reason we show this slide separately, when we receive our dollars from the states, we receive one lump sum for our entire 1.5% collection, but we, as a city, record, record the dollars in two separate funds. We have a 1% sales tax and a 1/2% sales tax fund. So these dollars, the trend will be exactly the same, it's exactly half of the slide that you just saw previously.
Mr. Mori, if you could pause. I think we have a presentation that is scheduled for 4:55. Mrs. Heather is here, or somebody could get her out of the lobby.
Okay, I'm going to read something. This is for the general public, and I'm sure her family knows, and they're all following her in. I'm just going to read something quick.
And Nelson is here, too. I just seen him.
Okay. Is the... Is he in? Okay. This is a gentleman you saved, right?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Okay. Just for the general public, Mrs. Heather saved this man's life. And as a city, we want to recognize that. And today, we will be giving a life-saving award on behalf of the city to Mrs. Tammy Heather, and before I present the award, I'm just going to read a little narrative, what she wrote. She said, "I became a certified in first aid and CPR in 1983. Who knew one day I would save a life? Actually, it was June 12, 2018, a beautiful summer day at about 11:45, and I headed to Bush Lumber for a contractor's barbecue. I was eating my lunch and visiting with a friend. Behind me, I heard someone cough, and then spitting and sputtering. And I turned around to see his hand on his throat and the look of fear in his eyes. And I got up, turned him away from me, put my hands together just below the rib cage, and gave him the upward thrusts of the Heimlich maneuver. And whatever was stuck popped out. I asked him if he was okay. He said yes. He thanked me. I said, 'You're welcome.' I sat down, finished my lunch, and headed back to work." She said, "I really didn't think anything about what I was doing, I just needed to be, you know, what was to be done." She said, "Later that day, Nelson's daughter put in a request to find me on Facebook, looking for the woman who saved her life," or his life. So on behalf of the city, I would like to present the life-saving award to Tammy Heather in recognition and appreciation of her courageous actions in saving a human life. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Always very appreciative of citizens like yourself, so, and I mean, he's really appreciative. And, and with that, I guess Tammy forgot, I was going to have... Tammy, could you come back up here quick? Could you just tell the public a little bit about yourself? And what you do for a living, and who you work for? I saw some employ...
Yes, I work for Kildare Mountain Manufacturing, and that's Mr. Mr. Hedger. I've been out there three years. We've lived in town here for, like, 18 years. Just, I don't know.
Well, really appreciative, like I said, and, you know, we want to recognize people, you know, citizens like yourself that do not hesitate in rushing to save people.
I just did what needed to be done. I was there for a reason, so...
You were there for a reason.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Yep. All right, we have a 5 o'clock, and we have a visit from Mr. Kramer in the Park Board, Dickinson Park and Rec, Community Center presentation.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you. With me today is President of the Park Board, Scott Kovach. Um, that's a tough act to follow. Uh, we did not do anything as stellar as that. A couple of things we just wanted to go over tonight was a little bit of the city assistance that you participate with in the Park District. I believe you have the information in front of you. I will review it, and ultimately, what we want to do is be able to answer, answer any questions that you have, um, so that you're comfortable with where the dollars are going. Uh, first and foremost, the, uh, Community Center. If you recall, back in 2001, the, uh, community approved the, the ballot to approve the half-cent sales tax. 2004, that led to the, the grand opening of the West River Community Center. Uh, in 2009, we partnered with the city to enter into a operation and maintenance assistance program. What that program was designed to do was assist us with our, our operating budget so that we weren't having to, uh, purchase equipment, do projects. Uh, maybe we had pump repair, repairs, we had a boiler replacement. They helped us with those type of one-time, big, uh, financial amounts so that it didn't affect the, uh, the routine O and M. As you can see, averaging since 2009, we're about $150,000 a year in requests for assistance. Um, the last few years, that's been about $125,000, and that's because, three years ago, we replaced a boiler, and that was a $300,000 expense, so it kind of inflated, uh, the numbers a little bit. But, like I said, we're about $125,000 the last few years. Um, and, and the big thing, after 14 years, we still have not requested an annual subsidy. Uh, when the building was constructed and the consultants came in and ran all their numbers, they basically told us that we're going to need an extra $200,000 a year to operate this building. We've been very, uh, fortunate that we've been able to manage the budget and not come to the city for, uh, a subsidy request. Uh, a little bit on the annual memberships, going up all the way back to May of 2004, when we opened our doors, again, the consultants told us, you're going to have about 1,750 annual members. We opened our doors with 4,470. Um, first six years, we saw a lot of different things happen in our community. We hit a, a low in October of 2010, 3,711 members. Uh, the next five years, it was all over the place. A lot of things happened that, uh, drove that number up, and in 2015, we hit a, a high of 6,422. The last three years, again, it's, it's kind of been, uh, a revolving number, but I can say, the last year and a half has progressively increased. We have not had a month where we have went backwards, and we currently sit at about 5,981 annual members. As far as how this fits into our budget, um, the Community Center budget's about $2.4 million to operate the facility. The Park District budget as a whole is about $5.7 million. Uh, 1.7 million of our budget is through property tax collections. The rest is all through user fees, sponsorships, and, and other forms of outside revenue. Uh, we employ 28 full-time benefited employees and about 468 part-time seasonal employees for the Park District. Uh, the second form of assistance that the city provides is our, uh, Quality of Life Project Assistance, and that started in 2012. That kind of spun off the success of the Community Center where, uh, we sat down with the city and we wanted to look at other facilities that the Park District had that we possibly could, uh, improve and, uh, create a, a, a quality of life in Dickinson that, that people were expecting. Um, if you look at the list on the back page, you can see from the very first year, 2013, uh, we really focused on those facilities that we thought could create an economic impact to the community. So, you'll notice, we, we focused some dollars heavily on Grass Softball Complex, Heart River Golf Course, uh, the baseball park, and we actively went after more tournaments and events to attract people to the community. And again, those, those people spend dollars, uh, gas stations, restaurants, hotels, and ultimately increase the sales tax. And again, that's what the focus of, of the program was. The last couple of years, uh, we sat down with the, the former city administrator, uh, Mr. Kessel, and we wanted to focus on facilities that were actually city-owned facilities, but yet, the Park District managed them. So, as you see some of the facilities lately, you'll see, um, the facility's security systems. A lot of the facilities, um, public facilities that we use did not have security systems, and we started to have some occasional instances where, whether it was in the parking lot or in the armory or the community center, where law enforcement needed some help. So, we, we did a plan, and we, we currently are just completing that program. Um, but also, the Banshell, uh, Memorial Park, and then, public art was a, a big concern of, of Mr. Kessel's that he wanted us to focus on. So, that's where we kind of put our focus in '17 and '18. And future projects, as I kind of look into the future, I, I really think, um, our focus is going to be on assisting some of these other user groups, such as the youth baseball, softball, soccer. Uh, land is at a premium, and we've, we're about ready to outgrow a lot of our facilities. Um, so, I think that will be, you know, 19, 20, it's coming. Uh, when you hear the sizes of some of these kindergarten classes, those kids are five years old, but when they're eight and nine, they're going to be in our programs, and we need to be able to count for them. Um, the other thing, I think, is just city landscaping and beautification projects. Uh, whether that's a, a public park, or whether it's a boulevard or an entrance to the community, it needs to be a focal point that we're working together to invest those dollars, uh, so that when people drive down that boulevard, they really say, wow! And it's, needs to be a focus of ours as well. As far as the dollars that are budgeted in here, you can see, it started out in 2013 with 580,000, and we're down to 185 this year. That number is completely allocated by you, and it's based on how well the sales tax fund does. We don't budget a number, we don't request a number. The number is given to us, you know, by the city, and that's, uh, how we then put our project list together. Uh, so, that's a, a quick summary, but again, we, we really want to be able to answer any questions that you have, unless Mr. Kovach has anything.
You know, the only comment I would make is, is, um, there's no question that, the project that's probably going to be utmost important coming up is going to have to be some kind of a sports complex. We are busting at the seams with Mustang baseball, um, or, uh, soccer.
Softball.
What, softball, what, that, and, yeah, softball is certainly a factor. We do have Grass, we have Northside, we might be able to make that work somehow, but, um, there's no doubt, we're going to have to do something. If you pay any attention to the school numbers, um, that's going to hit us pretty soon.
Well, and, and I know, before the past city administrator left, we had a meeting, we sat down. At that time, I made the suggestion to Mr. Kovach and Mr. Kramer that, uh, we do own some land, the city does, uh, you know, the south side of town. And if, they're looking at 20 to 30 acres.
Yes.
And, um, with the land being at a premium, I think that we can possibly assist, and it would fit into our, I, I spoke with, uh, police chief and the fire chief, and looking at the expansion of the training areas out there and what land's available, we might be able to accommodate some of their needs and get the sports complex built up. So, um, we'll see if it, it fits into their, you know, what they have for a project.
You're right.
And, uh, I, I agree with you. The, these classes are going to be here quicker than we can probably accommodate them, so we need to start, you know, preparing now.
Mr. President, I, I think it's great that you're, uh, running that, uh, facility where you haven't been able, or you didn't need to come to us and ask for that 200,000 every year for the last X amount of years, that, uh, now that the statute of limitations is gone. You know, but anyway, you know, by not requesting that, that does allow us freedom to give money to your Quality of Life Plan here, too, you know, so, like I say, with the land and so on, we can also donate some dollars and just improve on the community, but thanks for a fine job.
Thank you.
And how was the expedition? How, how did it go?
You know, I think it was a, a tremendous success the first year. I think, uh, going into it, and even myself, when they were coming to us with numbers of 500 to 700 a game, I, you know, under my breath, I might have laughed a little bit, and I was thinking more 200, 300, but, you know, at the end of the season, they were, they were getting over 1,000 people a game. Um, they have committed for next year. We, we meet next week to outline some potential projects at the ballpark. Um, we're very fortunate that in their league of eight teams, our facility is one of the better ones that they have, and, uh, I really look as that is going to grow in the community. And I think it might even open up some, some doors to some other potential opportunities. Um, the community has looked at a, a junior affiliated hockey team for years. When they see the success of this, um, you know, it might open up some opportunities that way, but, uh, all in all, it was a great year, and we're looking forward to next year already.
And then, um, I, I had spoke with you about, there's some, uh, parking issues. I guess we'll have to address some of that.
Yeah.
You know, because as it grows in popularity, it's just going to, it's more and more, you know, congested down in that area, so...
Absolutely. It, it's a, it's a very nostalgic, old-time baseball park. It's been there a long time, and when you, when you're used to seeing 200 people in the stands, now you're at 1,000, they all have to park somewhere. And unfortunately, there's a lot of street parking.
I'll make sure if, uh, when you guys do to come, you know, come to a decision on, you know, what you're going to do about parking, you let us know, and we'll see what we can do to assist you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the gentlemen?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, our next timetable is at 5:15, so, Mr. Mori.
Thank you, President Decker. Uh, jumping back in, we left off with hospitality tax. Um, so, with our hospitality tax, you can see, it's been up and down in 2018 with the red line. Um, we are actually 30,000 higher through seven months in '18 than what we were in 2017. Um, we did decrease by 22% in our July collection from July of 2017, um, but we were up 51% in May, and we were up 14% in June, which is part of the reason why we're still 30,000 higher than we were at this point in 2017. Occupancy tax, uh, again, just a reminder for the public, uh, what we do when we collect our occupancy tax, uh, we take out a half a percent as an admin fee, um, and then the remainder after that admin fee is taken out goes directly to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, through, through seven months in this fund, we're actually down $18,000. Uh, we were down 11% in July, down 7% in June, but we were up 23% in May of '18 compared to where we were in May of '17. Uh, moving on to oil impact. Um, as you can see, we, we're starting to increase in our oil impact fund. Uh, reason for that is, as of June, we're no longer making any portion of that payment to Dickinson State University. Uh, July was the first month where we should have had a full, a full payment come directly to us without that portion being taken out. Um, as you can see from the graph, too, we are lower still in July of '18 compared to where we were in July of '17, uh, down 16%, but we are still in line to meet our 2018 And then, finally, uh, the snapshot of our age trial balance summary that you received in your packet as well. Um, I just wanted to mention quick on here, you'll see in the accounts payable under the current section that it's 2.2 million. The reason for that is, on the consent agenda that you saw, we had, I believe it was a 1.4 million, um, or, I believe, 1.4, 1.5 million dollar bond payment to Starion for our Community Center bond. So, that's the reason that that number, uh, jumped up significantly from the last report. Uh, any other questions on those numbers? Uh, you, you can see the detail in your packet as well, um, and feel free to let us know if you have any questions on a specific customer, a specific vendor. Uh, if there are any other questions, I'll do my best to answer those now. Uh, city staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Mori on the, uh, financial report?
No questions for me.
Questions? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the financial report.
Who to approve?
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
For the second. Any further questions, comments? All in favor of approving the financial report? State aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Financial approval, report is approved.
Thank you.
We have a 5:15, Underpass mural. Uh, and that will, presentation will be up by Mrs. Fear. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. Uh, my name is Chris Fear. I'm the Executive Director of Western Wellness Foundation, and tonight, I'm here, um, with great pleasure to give you a brief, just a brief history of this mural project and bring the designs to you for your review. So, back in 2016, as part of a community planning grant that Western Wellness was working on, we conducted a survey of the community, and part of the survey results showed 40% of respondents requested public art and art activities in our community. So, in visiting with Mr. Kessel, he identified the Underpass as a place for public art. Um, his proposal was, idea was to enhance Highway 22, which is a key corridor that leads in, right in to Dickinson's downtown and to the regional airport. And Mr. Kessel felt the Underpass project would fold right into the downtown revitalization efforts and provide a welcome to the city. And it was important that community participation be incorporated in the, um, creation of the public art. So, our project title is Building Community Through Public Art Engagement, and we applied to the National Endowment for the Arts under its Challenge America Grant Program, and we were awarded a $10,000 matching grant, and the city has already provided the $10,000 match. And then, there's another 12,500 in donated services, equipment use, et cetera, so it's a $32,500, $32,500 project. Um, so, the goals of, of the project, um, included reflecting our region, enhancing the downtown revitalization efforts through creative placemaking, using public art as a tool, and building on the engagement of the community in the design and creation of public art. So, if you think about the community participation, we have the Downtown Task Force selecting the theme, which is a historic theme, and suggested the ideas to the artist, and then, area artists and college and high school students and art students will be part of the project with having the opportunity to be assistants in the project. Other students, um, classes, student community groups, and the general public will also be able to participate in the painting. The schedule of painting times will be electronically posted, and we'll encourage anyone interested to sign up online. And at the end of the project, we'll, we'll be doing a public recognition of the project, and we'll do another community survey. And the task force has re-refined the designs, and now, they come to the City Commission for approval under recommendation to the department, and then, you'll be recommending to the Department of Transportation. So, our timeline is going to be beginning the murals in late September, finishing in mid-October, and then, the community survey and the required grant reports to NEA in November. So, let's just take a look at the designs. You have a copy of those, and they're also on the screen. And so, that's, this, this is what you seem is pretty self-explanatory, um, but I am here just to hear your comments and your thoughts. Sarah Trustum and Jason Frederick are also on the task force. They have, um, been very integrally involved, as has, um, Mrs. Murtha, and, um, quite a bit of your city staff, uh, as well, has been helping us out with this project. So, one of the walls is a Badlands-type theme. Another wall shows, um, our farming and ethnic past. You have a schoolhouse, you have a train, kind of things in our past. And, I don't know, it's up really up to you if you want to go on to the next, that's another wall. This would be the one by the Fisher Group on the south side of the Underpass. Um, and then, the other one would, is the, um, sort of the historic iconic, um, DSU, which is on the side closest to TMI.
Mrs. Fear, is the, I guess my, my only question would be on the paint itself, once it's up in the projects. I, I think the design is great. It looks, it looks amazing. Is the paint graffiti-resistant?
Yeah, there's a covering that goes on, um, and our mural artists will be working with your city staff on that, so that really, we can just remove that ourselves here, or he- can come in and remove it as well. But there is a covering that goes over it.
I think, you know, there might be some artists that want to enhance our mural.
And Mr. Decker, I just want to thank Mrs. Fear and the members of the Downtown Task Force. This has gone through many, many revisions, and Ms. Fear has been instrumental in kind of guiding the project to fruition. And I think it's really come a long way, and I think it's absolutely beautiful, so thank you for your hard work on it. It's going to look awesome.
I think it will. I'm really excited. It's been two years of waiting to get to this point, so then it'll be over in about three weeks. But we're definitely open to any feedback, thoughts.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Questions, comments on design? Most of city staff has seen this. Any comments from city staff? Not? I would look for a motion to consider the approval, or if you don't want to approve it, but I'd look for the motion to approve the design.
Who to approve, Mr. President?
A motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mrs. Fear?
I just wanted to mention that once we get closer, I'll be coordinating with Mr. Hadley and Mr. Zurov because it's going to be pretty intensive, a lot of people in that area. So we'll be really working closely together to make sure everything gets done properly and safely.
Safety barriers or?
For the agreement with DOT also, we have to have the sidewalk blocked off and access to sidewalks. So just let us know and give us a little lead time and we'll.
So they'll do one side at a time? Because you'll have to block one?
That's my understanding.
Yep.
We'll see how it goes. I'm not sure exactly how it's all going to be done, but you can't have hundreds of people there painting at one time. That's why we're thinking of doing a schedule. And so people know these are the times. And there'll be other times where maybe a class will come and paint. That wouldn't necessarily be advertised to the public because that class will be there.
I guess my concern would be, so we still have people using the?
Yep, that is, that's a big thing. If I'm right, the DOT was adamant that that road cannot ever be blocked. That needs to keep going.
Road be blocked, we have to provide pedestrian travel. So we need to make sure we have that available.
Yeah. I can't tell you how grateful I am just to the responsiveness and the encouragement and support and the guidance from your staff. That has really been, starting with Mr. Kessel, years, you know, go, but all the way down to several other people on your staff. It's really been gratifying to have someone be, all your staff be so supportive and then offering additional suggestions, which really enhances the project.
Great. I'm really pleased with the outcome, and I'm really happy that staff is involved and taking, you know, their time to get this project right, so. So we have a motion to approve with a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Get that mural up.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We have about 10 minutes till the next timetable agenda, so we'll move into, we have some reports. And the first one will be our Hiring Journal. I should say the second one.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. First up on the Hiring Journal is Police Officer. We have currently one opening. We have someone in the background phase, so with any luck, that could be filled for a while. Police Sergeant, we had an internal opening and that was recently filled. We also had an opening for Information Intelligence Analyst position, and that was, has been filled, and she is working. We have recently opened the Street and Fleet Operations, I missed one, Corporal Police Officer. That was an internal opening, and they are in the interview process right now. Street and Fleet Operations Manager, that position has recently been opened again. We're going to keep it open for about a month and do some extensive advertising for that, see if we can't get a street manager filled. We have a Street Maintenance Operator position, actually three openings in the Street Department for Operator. We did make offers on two. They are in the background, so we have one more position to fill for that. Water Utility Operator, we had two openings. We did get one filled. That person will start next week, so we have one more position. The position is open and does close the end of the week. Waste Water Treatment Plant, we do have two openings there. We're going to be doing interviews next week for that. Limited Hour Library Assistant, we had three openings. We did fill two of those positions, so we have one more opening that we're advertising for there. Solid Waste Route Operator, we have one opening, and that position also will close this week. And then as you know, City Administrator is on the list, and there will be a report later on that, our discussion. Fleet Service Assistant is also open, and that position is closing this week as well. Any questions on any of our open positions or filled?
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek?
All right. Thank you.
We have, next up, we have a Cronos update from Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. I wish I had good news, but I don't. And since 2016, it was recommended that we go into an electronic time and attendance program, and it was bid out, and we went with Cronos. This was before I came in, but the Time and Attendance, which they called it TLM, which is Time Labor Management Program. And that was budgeted for around $61,000 back in 2016. And since I've been here, we've tried to implement a couple other modules that work with it. And since then, this last couple weeks, the efforts that the city has been putting forward, plus the efforts with Cronos, just has not been working, period. It's just a lot of series of errors, just changing team members through Cronos and things. And through the date of last week, the total amount that we have used out in the $61,000 has been $55,000, a little over $55,000. And it was a decision made that through the city and staff of the executive team, through quite a few deliberations, and then all the resources that we had been putting in, no matter how much we put in, it just wasn't, it wasn't coming forward. There was just no movement forward. We were constantly taking four steps back instead of four steps forward. So with that, we made a determination, and I made a request to Cronos team, management team, to terminate the contract. And working with Attorney Murtha, we worked, we had a discussion with the executive team of Cronos and made our verbal termination request. And then last Friday, I made a written request to terminate upon convenience. We are just looking at what we can come from the Cronos team. And the amount of money that we put in, yes, it was quite a bit of money, but what we got out of it was more. We have a lot of experience now. We have a lot more knowledge. We understand what was going on. We improved our HR code. We've improved our wage and our laws and coming up to the code and bringing regulations up to par. So I feel that even though there is a lot of money that we did spend, I quote another member that said that it is like a study. We did all the experience that we could, and we tried, but it just doesn't match. We just do not work with our financial system that we have now, our software system. It just does not work. Now, with that being said, we are not giving up on a time and attendance. We are going forward. Our staff needs time and attendance. It's where we need to be to be the efficiency that we need to have. It helps with all sorts of management of knowing where our employees are and the convenience of it. So we will continue working with that, and we want to make sure that the commission understands that the staff that did work on it, they did put a lot of effort to it. They were disappointed that we couldn't get forward, but it is, you have to draw a line. We just cannot keep spending money with that. On that basis, in my written termination request, I did offer to pay up the August payment of $2,700, which would be our regular monthly charge. We go month to month on it. I did request a refund on our payroll system that was never implemented or never used. It wasn't a program that we could use, and the process that we went through wasn't what we expected it to be. So I asked for a refund on that, which was $2,250. So with that, we are requesting that we pay a difference of $450 to terminate our contract. With that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson?
I mean, our contract with them, I mean, they didn't perform.
Correct.
So why are we paying them?
I'm going to have Attorney Murtha do the legal.
If I may, if I may offer, and I'll just recommend to you now, that they, the evaluation of the strengths and weaknesses of the contract, again, I don't believe that contract language was reviewed closely at the time it was signed, would be appropriate for an executive session discussion similar to that which was had, for example, relating to the agreement about the relocation of the pole. So with that, this is a regularly scheduled meeting. You are free now to do an executive session, table the item, have an executive session on this matter at the end of the commission meeting, or have it scheduled for the September meeting as you wish. But I would highly recommend that if you want to get the most, the most out of the discussion, that you do use an executive session for that risk and benefit analysis.
Well, I would recommend that we use the executive session, but I would say for allowing staff to prepare for it, maybe in the next meeting.
Okay, I will take that into consideration and have that for that.
Unless commissioners want it tonight, add it tonight.
I mean, you guys need preparation time, or do you know what we're going to ask you?
I don't. But I, but I would.
Okay. Well, then, I'm fine with adding it tonight.
We can do it at the end of the meeting adjutant.
I'd make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion to add fourth executive session this evening.
Second.
Second. All in favor of adding a fourth? State aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. We'll add a fourth executive session for discussion of the termination of the Cronos update, and we'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
We have a 5:35 timetable, and it is Dickinson Hills Development. And presenting tonight will be Mr. Ron Raden. Mr. Raden?
President Decker, did, I know you had discussed a time for the timetable, and I don't know.
Okay. We're looking at about 20 minutes. That'll be enough, Mr. Raden?
I think that'll be plenty enough time. Thanks, you guys.
Your one thing is upside down.
No, thank you, Mayor Council, for seeing me. I call it my last day in court to try to see if we can't get this thing taken care of tonight. What I wanted to do is go back a little bit. Again, my name's Ron Raden from Five Diamonds Development. And 2012, we got this project totally entitled. We had cash-wise going on it. We spent $4.5 million on the property to the Fairgrounds Association, if you remember. We put together a complete package for the fairgrounds. Because we couldn't buy it, we had to trade them. So that's how your fairgrounds got developed out here. Regardless, in 2012, let me get to the white elephant. We needed the, we didn't need the money back then because the property was surrendering enough money off of it. Nobody needed any help back in 2012, 13, and 14. We put, we had cash-wise going in here at the time, and we had all the strips on both sides full. We had a C store here. We had the hotels going in here. And the hotel sites were surrendering $18 a square foot at the time. Cash-wise was $10 a square foot. The corner locations were $40 a square foot. That was back in the heydays when everything was going well. Okay, between now from 2012 to 2018, everything's changed. The anchors aren't, there's not big boxes anymore. The anchors are the lineup that we have now, which we're very lucky to have. I've never quit since 2012 to try to get somebody to come out on the project to make it work. We put $8 million in the development, and to do this right now, and we've sat down with Craig Coobis today, and I want to thank him personally for sitting with us. We went through the numbers and we explained to him that the project, this whole piece right here, I'd give 11 acres to the city. I'd give it to any developer in town that could make it work. It doesn't pencil. It's shy about $3 million without the road. Okay? So that's when we came to you guys in June, and we asked for $9 million tiff, which we didn't understand wouldn't work at the time, and so the bonds were thrown out. I'm not even going to go there. But now, we're at the point where we've talked to the anchor tenants, and they said that they had all still come with the one road going in, which is Fairway, if the city could put it in. And we've sat down with Craig, went through the numbers. I think we've kind of concurred where the numbers are. We've had Martin build it, bid it, Tracy Toose has bid it, the engineers, his engineering group, my engineering group, we're all within a couple hundred thousand dollars. The million three that we're asking for the city to put into it now would develop their street right to here, to the back of the development. What I'd have to do is I'd have to work with Bill of the Fire Department, make sure we got an all-weather road that goes out the back like we did when we developed the property in the beginning. We pulled the road out here and bring it back behind the state sheds and out that way, so we got two ways in and two ways out. The water lines loop, everything seems to work out okay. The problem we're having and not having is the users will pay it off in three to five years, just the four that we're showing on a tax base only. And Rita, could you pull that up?
Back, do you have a slide on the?
Craig, who did you give that to? And Andy, you want to come up and go through this with them? Word for word to go through it?
Did you have that pro forma?
So while she's calling that up, let me just tell you what we did is we took your current sales tax rate for Dickinson City only, which is 1.5%. I know you're voting on maybe raising that to 2% this fall, but the numbers that we've calculated are, yeah, those numbers right there. So if you just go from left to right, you can see the four major anchor tenants that we have. We have Hobby Lobby, 55,000 square feet, and the property value is about 4.5 million for the Hobby Lobby building. And they generate, and this is a number that... And they generate, and, and this is a number that they've given to us, and we have representatives from these, these four anchors tonight, and we hope you talk with them. They generate about $6 million annually in gross sales, which generates approximately, it's kind of dark there, the five, is it 90,000? 90,000 in sales tax to Dickinson City directly, let alone the other sales tax that goes to the state. There we go. And then the property tax for that, based upon your current levy, is about 9,000, 9,700 bucks a year. Then you go down to TJ Maxx, which is 22,000 square feet. The property value is 2.8 million. They, their annual sales for cities of similar size is $8 million, which would generate $120,000 in sales tax to the city based upon your current rate, and about $6,000 in, in the property tax. You can also see the next two columns shows how many employees that they would hire and the average annual wages for all of those employees for each of the particular companies. Then we have the Shoe Department Encore. For 10,000 square feet, they sell about 1.8 million a year. It generates the 27,000 and 4,100 in property tax. And then the final one is Dollar Tree. They have 9,000 square feet. The value is 1.4 million, but they sell about a million bucks a year, and it generates 15,000. And if you add all of those up on, as soon as they are established, they're generating close to 300,000 a year. Now, you can see the different years as it, as it grows annually, and we escalated it at about 2.5% for each of those years. So within just a few years, the, the sales tax alone essentially pays off whatever infrastructure investment. Now, a couple, when we were here a month ago, you asked, why should we invest in this one as opposed to somewhere in, in the city? I used to be a city manager in one of the fastest-growing cities in, in the United States, similar size to Dickinson, and people were coming to us all the time, asking us to invest in their, in the infrastructure to help them do that, to operate their companies. Very similar to where you're at right now. But you have to make the decision. We're not asking you to make any particular decision. We are asking you to make it. If you're going to do infrastructure improvement, this is a perfect project for you to do because it pays for itself just after a few years, and will continue to pay more and more for the years that it's there. These contracts, leases, are 15-year leases, and they're going to be there for at least that and probably many, many years longer. Please ask our, our representatives from those companies. But bottom line is, within just a few short years, the taxes that this project would generate would pay off any infrastructure that you would put into the public road of Fairway. Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to explain to everybody, last time I was here, I heard a couple of you say, well, why couldn't you go somewhere else in the city? There's property. Roars has got vacant property across the street. I've been out here with every one of these tenants. Roars, the way they developed it, they don't want to go over there because it's facing the freeway, the only path that they've got over there. They can even go on across the street. They need 800 feet in front of them for parking. It doesn't work over by the hospital. I took them down 22. We went over the hill, looked at property over there. They didn't want to be in the industrial park. They want to be off the freeway. When I bought this property, I am a commercial developer, I've done many of these, they wanted this piece of ground. So as far as them going to the mall, they won't go to the mall. And that's why I've got more to put on this plat, but we're not going to show it because each time I come in here and tell you guys, you know, it makes it public, Prairie Hills calls them and says, hey, we'll give you a smoking deal. We'll all but give you the property if you'll just move in, dah, 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 dah. They're not going to the mall. The users are here tonight. I want you guys to ask them any questions you want. They're gonna tell you a couple things that I've been wanting to say, but they've been holding me back, so if you wouldn't mind.
Cameron?
I'm Cameron Simonson, and this is my partner, Dan Moore. And collectively, we, we do these projects all over the western United States. We represent these tenants as they go into very similar markets throughout Idaho, Wyoming, Montana. This is technically my first opportunity in North Dakota, but I just wanted to give you an idea of, of where we're at and why, why we're considering the market. Like these guys said, they're looking to sign a 10- or 15-year lease, which is a huge commitment for these retailers. And in all honesty, it, it's a huge accomplishment, and Ron has done a great job with being patient with this, just to get these retailers to come to the city of Dickinson for a tour, let alone go through the real estate committee, let alone get the capital allocated for what they're gonna spend on their store, as well as negotiate an entire lease and be ready to execute. So we're here to just tell you, there's an opportunity right now. Our window is closing. These tenants have allocated the funds for a fall of 2019 opening, which means if we don't move now on getting all the design done, everything, you guys have a seasonal construction period, we can't start first thing in the spring and have these guys open by August or September. As I've walked around today throughout Dickinson, I've asked everybody where they shop, and nine out of 10 says I go to Bismarck. And to me, this is an opportunity to bring these tenants, and we're talking about four tenants on a larger project. Now, these retailers, they're, they're lemmings. They all want to be next to each other. So you land the anchors, which we're considering these four are first anchors, the rest follow. And that includes restaurants, entertainment, hotels, further apparel users. And I, I really wanted to just basically go through a couple of things, just on the strength of these companies. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, TJ Maxx is a Fortune 85 company in the Fortune 500. They have over 4,000 stores across five different brands in nine countries and do over $35 billion in revenue as of last year. They're looking to, to build a 22,000-foot store in this market. And the interesting thing about TJ Maxx in particular, 2017 marked their 22nd consecutive year of comparable store sales increase. But you read the news and you hear about Sears and Kmart, and yeah, there were a lot of retailers that are past their prime, but for TJ Maxx to stay 22 years, just on the up and up. They also see this opportunity. You've lost JCPenney, you've lost Herburgers. There's a lot of apparel sales in this market. Hobby Lobby is the largest privately-owned arts and crafts retailer in the world with more than 800 stores in 47 states. They'll operate a 55,000-square-foot store and employ 30 to 40 people. Dollar Tree is also a Fortune 200 company. They have 14,800 stores across 48 states. They're not as large as the other players, but they're very solvent. Shoe Department is one of the largest privately-held shoe retailers in the world with over 1,200 stores. They're privately owned. And, and they told me I could publicly say, you know, we project that the Dickinson market, with the lack of shoe competition, would do 1.8 to $2 million in annual sales. The other thing that I want to add, going to the, the short window, these tenants have allocated funds for the BAC. They want to open a store in 2019. Ron and Dan and everybody, we've been working on the, to get to this point for five years to where we can sign and announce these deals, but we haven't been able to get past this finish line. And these tenants, as such, have been looking elsewhere. So three out of the four tenants, and soon to be four out of the four tenants, are negotiating on deals in Williston as well. And just speaking from experience, these, these tenants, they generally pick a market such as Dickinson, open a store, see how it performs for sometimes five years, 10 years, before they'll commit to go to a market that close in a smaller market. So the way I'm looking at this, you guys have an opportunity to have those people at your doorstep. Great retailers that'll draw a ton of different uses, or these tenants will ultimately pick another option. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, but I, I really just wanted questions more than anything, if there's anything that I can do to help any of you.
You gentlemen, you just represent the tenants. You don't work for the tenants.
Correct. Represent TJ Maxx in four states now. Shoe Department in this transaction. Done Hobby Lobbies in Montana, Idaho. I personally, I don't represent Dollar Tree, but that's a tenant that we, we helped bring along based upon the strength of the other three coming to the market, potentially coming to the market.
Any questions, commissioners, for these gentlemen or Mr. Raden?
I got a question. Mr. Raden, you mentioned 15-year lease, you mentioned 10-year lease. What are the, what is the lease gonna be locked in at?
You can explain that. Yeah, he can go through every one of them.
So Hobby Lobby is a 15-year commitment on their lease.
Now, now, this is important for, I understand we've talked about this here.
Yep.
You're talking commitment. Now, I'm talking about a signed lease. Will you be able to provide to us a copy of that signed lease that says 15 years and what the penalty is if they break that lease?
We will be able to provide that lease if you decide to move forward with, make a contingent upon that lease.
I thought you were asking which one was signing 15 or 10s. Yeah, I can share those all with you. I'll bring all the leases to you and sit down with every one of you and show them. The reason why these guys are here tonight is they are going to Williston. It's not a threat. I called them after that meeting we had on the telephone call. I says, I'm gonna go out there on the 28th, but I says, I figure we got a 10-90 shot even getting it done. I says, we've already put the money aside, you know, they've already announced it to their boards, so they've already got a spot up there. These guys aren't gonna go anywhere. They don't close their stores. They don't invest the kind of money they do when they open a store to close them in two or three years. It's gonna make me sick if we don't get it tonight, because the deal is, if they're here tonight, and they'll tell you, if it doesn't get approved tonight, they're gone.
And one thing I wanted to add, sorry, Ron, but the, the reason I, I went through the strength of each one of these tenants, they're extremely recession-proof tenants, recession-resistant tenants is probably a better way to, to put that. But you look at it, the value proposition, Dollar Tree, TJ Maxx, which is an off-price retailer, Hobby Lobby, all four of these tenants were expanding during the Great Recession. And I know that you guys didn't feel the effects of the Great Recession quite like I did in my backyard, but that was a big thing. And these guys, I mean, I urge you to do your research on all four of them and see what they bring to the community. I think they're a great asset.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Tell me, we made an offer prior to this to contribute 500,000, and then the remaining to be paid back in a special improvement program. Why, why can't that offer work? Explain the situation to me.
The, the real issue is, in each one of these retailer leases, they restrict that sort of setup in the special improvement district. So I can't go back now that we're ready to sign. Those guys, it'll kill the deals with the way it's set up that way.
But why, Mr. Raden, as you a developer, can't pay it back?
We're already losing, we've got 8 million in it now, without any interest, paid cash. We've got, if you build it now and got a seven cap, and I don't know if you understand a seven cap versus an eight or a nine, a seven cap's the most aggressive cap you can get out of it. We're 3 million in the hole. The million-dollar difference that you guys were talking about, it's $150,000 a year that's gotta come out of the taxes which you put against the property. That's how special improvement district works, which would go against the tenants and us, and nobody can and will do it. And like he says, if they go back now and say, no, okay, now we got a special improvement district for $150,000 a year divided by four, they're not making that kind of money. We've sat down with Craig, we went through, we've taken everything out of it. We're down to a million three, I think, Craig, a million two something on the entire thing. And as Andy showed you, it totally pays off in five years without anybody else coming. And I'm telling you, we've already got two other users that I'm not gonna mention tonight that's going on the side of it. We've already got one out front and the big one off to the right. And that, and all we're doing, what I did is I says, okay, for these gentlemen's owners' behalf, I says, I'm just gonna show the city exactly what it is. They're not gonna open and close. They'll pay the, the RDA, or not the RDA, the, the tax that you guys are gonna get back will pay off in five years if this is the only ones that are out there.
I mean, well, our, excuse me, our only, our issue as a city is, we won't see what they generate in the tax, because we can't get that information. So we won't know if they're actually paying us back. The state doesn't provide us individual users' tax information.
They don't?
They will not.
Okay, but they send you the amount back, right?
Well, yeah.
We, we get a, oh.
You give them a bill and say, this is what they, you know, this is the amount they should be bringing to Santa, they give you?
We can't request, how much did Hobby Lobby generate? They will not give us that information. They will not give us sector information. We get a lump sum payment.
So it's really hard for us to know if we make this commitment that this is actually coming from?
Or this, is this 1.5% is what you're supposed to get? So what you're telling me is the state's gonna cheat Dickinson?
No.
No, we'll still get the money. We just don't, we won't know what's coming from your development.
These guys have showed you what they're doing in exactly the same kind of areas like this.
So my question is, out of 16.8 million dollars in sales, if we split it between four retailers, 250, or you split it, $250,000 over 10 years in a special improvement district, you're telling me out of 16.8 million dollars, they can, annual sales, they can't make that payment of 25,000?
They're not gonna, no. They're already tied.
$25,000.
Pardon me?
$25,000, no.
I don't know how you figured it, but no. There's no special improvement district that'll work. We're here tonight, one time only. Told you I needed one time to get in front of you. You can either do it tonight or table it and kill the deal, because that'll kill the deal. All we're asking for is about tonight, yea or nay? These guys are packing their bags and they're gonna open a store in Dickinson or Williston.
Ms. Carlson, pulling out of the Theodore Roosevelt Memorial Library, we were putting 3 million aside for that, correct?
Correct.
And they took, we gave them 300,000, correct?
Correct.
So the 2.7 that we're not gonna be giving them is coming out of which fund?
50%, excuse me, 30% of the 1%.
30% of the 1%.
We had the discussion this morning, the budget.
Yep.
It's been reallocated.
I sit on the Stark Development Corporation board, and if these businesses individually came to us and said, we want to build a store, can you help us? And we want to bring 30, 40, 20 employees, I think we'd be doing flips to get them. That's what Stark Development does. We want businesses to come into town. They're coming directly to us instead of Stark Development. We give money to Stark Development, vice versa.
Mr. Steinier, I believe he's had discussions with Stark Development.
Pardon?
I believe Mr. Raden has been in contact with Ryan Gillick of Stark Development Corporation.
No.
But we fund Stark Development, that's almost $100,000 a year, 725, I think, this year.
Correct.
You know, I, I understand, you know, so many people have come and said, the mall has lost this and that. We have nowhere to buy clothes. We have nowhere to buy X, whatever it might be. The mall just isn't, it's, it's struggling right now. I think we can see, I don't think it's a surprise. I hope they can turn it around. But right now, this is what's facing us right here. And I, I like the 10-, 15-year leases, you know, I'm gonna put my faith in you on those that you lock those in. I understand that somebody building, putting that kind of money in, they're gonna be around. The 1.5, 1.3 million is your ask, right?
Mr. Coobis, what was the final, what was the final amount?
The final amount was 1.376 million.
1.376?
And change. 1.376.
We added about 50,000 to it yesterday with the grease and sand and water. with a grease and sand and water separator, which isn't part of the city's approval or demands. But as a developer, we do that before in all the other cities. So we added that much to it.
The thing that makes it enticing for me is we're going to be putting infrastructure that is the city of Dickinson's, not your guys'. You know, we're going to lead it up to you guys. You guys are taking it from there. That makes me feel a lot better that, you know, other developments can use that same street coming in and that type of thing. All businesses in town here have a street going by their place that somehow the city has helped finance, pay for, and build. I don't know any of them that built their own street going to the business. You know, so I'm looking on the yes side to support this here plan. I think it's a good plan. I think it's an opportunity for us. We made good decisions that haven't turned out very well. Theodore Roosevelt, 300,000. You know, that's gone. I don't think we're going to get that 300,000 back. But we do have money set aside right now to take care of this if we wish at the board.
Like I said this morning, the budget talks we reallocated.
Where'd you reallocate it?
Where do we...
Correct. We, as President Deckers said at our budget finalization, it was discussed that we reallocate some of the 3 million for feasibility studies and other commitments that we have had in...
I mean, it's not all gone.
No, no.
It's not all gone?
No.
Is there 1.376 left?
The fund balance is there? And there's other balances that...
We have other funds that actually would have gotten that.
Correct. Yes.
I'll leave... That's my perspective. I'll leave that with the rest of the board. Do what you guys want to do.
Any other comments, commissioners?
So if we did allocate this money to you, I mean, would your tenants be willing to share their sales information so we could see some payback? With... I mean, to us.
Yeah. So we would have to double-check. One of them would likely be able to share... Hobby Lobby is...
Being private, I would guess not.
Fiercely private. The... And to be honest, some of the publicly traded companies have rules that they have to follow on sharing that direct sales information with you. But I guess I didn't understand that you didn't see the exact numbers. But when Menards opens up, you know, in your community, you see a huge...
We see a lift, you know, obviously, but...
And that's... I don't know how I can quantify every dime, but you're going to see a lift.
The property tax number we can see, obviously, but...
Yeah.
I think the hardest part for the commission, and I may be speaking for myself, it's not that we don't support economic development in our community. It's not that we don't believe that these stores would be phenomenal to have in our region. I think where we're at is we are the stewards of the people's money. And what we have is a verbal commitment from you, but that's it. That's very difficult for us. And you can roll your eyes if you want. That's very difficult for us to make million-dollar decisions on. Now...
But could we make that decision contingent upon showing you the executed documents?
And that will be a decision of the board.
What is your investment in the building, Mr. Raden? What's going to cost you to bring these people?
It's going to cost us 23 million to build it, plus the 8 million we're already in it, plus the 3 million we'll lose until we sell other pads to make up.
So this first phase is going to cost you 20...
23 million.
Around 23 million.
Yep, and it's all open book. We've given you the numbers. We've got most, all the contractors out here. We're using your engineers. We're using your contractors. We're using your concrete, everything out here. I'm not bringing anybody from out of state.
We have this file. If you'd like to put it up.
Oh, if you got it, put it up. I didn't make copies of that.
That's all right.
So, Mr. Raden, would it be possible to include in a developer agreement that a contingency that if these stores do not come to fruition, that you will be responsible for the costs associated for us building Fairway?
In a New York second, yes. We're not going to build the buildings unless the roads are going in. You guys aren't going to put the roads in unless we bring you the leases and show you the buildings are going in. We're going to have to start the buildings early spring next year as we can. The good thing is the pad's already built. The civil has already been done. We're going off of the Cash Wise pad. And so we'll be bringing the buildings out of the ground when you guys are doing your road. And you will get the leases brought to you. I'll hand them to your attorney.
You might need to sign an NDA on... Just as a heads up to...
Well, I would just... I'll just jump in here if I may, Commissioner Trustam, in follow-up to your question. And just to let you know about NDAs, given that the city of Dickinson is a municipality is subject to the North Dakota Open Records and Meetings Law, that's not to say that confidential commercial information, as it's defined under North Dakota law, can't be protected as confidential. But the NDA isn't just something that the city can sign without reviewing whether or not the information itself would qualify for confidential treatment under statute. And I was just going to comment on the developer development agreement. My understanding is, and I would defer to Mr. Kubis and Mr. Hadley on this point because it would likely have gone into place prior to my being with the city. But I believe there was a development agreement that with regards to this particular development. So what you may be looking at is an amendment to that development agreement to incorporate some type of contingency language should the city move forward in this fashion. But again, I would defer to Mr. Kubis on that point, whether or not we... I believe we have one, is that correct?
There is a development agreement from 2014, roughly the same time the plat was approved, early in 2014. And I believe you're correct that if any financing package was approved, it would require an amendment to that development agreement.
And how strong is that legal protection if it's amended?
As strong as we can make it. There is usually a surety requirement as part of the development agreement. I haven't reviewed the prior one from 2014, but the future one could be contingent and include a requirement for a surety in the amount that would satisfy the city as far as coverage for that. So that could be developed. I'll just also just add that I... With this particular discussion item, I don't know if there are members of the public that are in the... Attending the meeting today that had concerns or wanted to express thoughts about this, this particular topic. So if the commission were to act, I don't know that it would be helpful if they had to wait until after the commission acted to share those concerns with you. So you could, at this time, if you wanted, open up public commentary on this particular item.
I know as commissioners, speaking for myself, I've been contacted by multiple individuals for and against. So I guess if you gentlemen are done with your presentation, then I would suggest also, and if commissioners are done with your questions, you have any further questions for these gentlemen? I would, I guess...
Just one more quick thing about the income that this project can generate. We've shown you what the public taxes would be, the revenue for the city. One thing that always occurs... I was on the Utah Economic Development Corporation to get economic development throughout the state of Utah. The numbers are very similar here in North Dakota as well. For every dollar that comes into your town that is not generated in your town, it gets passed around within your city at least seven times. These companies don't look at any city less than population of 50,000. Obviously, Dickinson isn't 50,000, but the Dickinson market area is bigger than that. So all the dollars that are coming in from outside of Dickinson City are going to be multiplied throughout your town at least sevenfold. So keep that in mind. If they have sales of 8 million annually, let's say 30% of that is from outside of your town, that 30% gets multiplied seven times. Think about that for the income for the city as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
I think they'll get their taxes back just by keeping my wife out of Hobby Lobby and Bismarck.
But you're getting paid a lot more than I thought you were getting paid, Mr. Steiner.
That aside, ladies and gentlemen, we've done seal coat projects of 1 million dollars with no return on our investment. This here could lead into a sizable return on our investment. That street will always be ours. There's always going to be possibility of other businesses building out there and so on. If we don't have faith in the city to grow and provide places for it to grow, you know, then we got to stop a lot of other things and just say, "We decided not to do anything." If we aren't going forward, we're going backwards. And, you know, I think it's an opportunity to bring in four pretty good businesses for not much money, 1.3 million. You know, it's a lot of money, but in this type of 21-million-dollar project and so on, I think an investment on the city's part, it would be well worth it.
There's one thing.
So the 1.37... There's no private infrastructure. There's... I mean, that's just our public fairway. What would that... Can you just break it down what that includes?
Correct. This is... Last time when we brought an estimate for a million dollars roughly was just Fairway Street. And it went through the whole entire development, all the way to the very western edge of the Dickinson Hills subdivision. This is water, sewer, storm sewer, and streets, but just to the back of this phase, to the back of that strip of stores. And so it's...
So it stops them a few feet shorter.
Yeah, it's probably a few hundred feet further that you'd have to go to the end of the development, to the very end of the subdivision. No roundabout. The items that we had taken out from the previous cost estimate, there were dry utilities, privately-owned utilities that you consolidated. Those types of utilities were taken out. Landscaping and seating were taken out. There may have been one other cost that we removed, but it's really water, sewer, street, or fairway. Oh, correct, yeah. There was some turn lane additions on the I-94 Business Loop, which we typically wouldn't participate in those costs anyway. So we removed those.
Now, is there going to be an additional cost for us to put in stoplights at that intersection?
Well, the...
That's not included in this.
That's not included in this. If we go back to the original development agreement from 2014, I did read that a couple of weeks ago. And there is a comment in there that if a temporary signal is required... We say temporary because at the time, that West Business Loop was looking... Or being looked at to be widened to a five lane, which really is not on the table right now from the DOT's side. But that the developer would fund a temporary signal system at the intersection of Fairway and the Business Loop if it met warrants for signals.
Right now, all the users know that it'll just be stop signs, right in, right out, on both sides, with stop signs. 2012, we were working with... I forget his name, Craig. Help me, over there at NDOT.
It was Larry Gangl.
Larry Gangl. What they were going to do is we were talking about just putting four poles up with a stop sign setup. And they were talking about doing I-94 or the Business Loop all the way around like they did across the street. And it was on the books at that time. And I think it's been pulled since.
Mr. Raden, I'll just respectfully request that you allow the commission to deliberate as the presentation time has concluded. And I think they need to have further discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Okay, commissioners, any other comments, questions? If not, I'm going to... I am going to open it up to the public. For any words of support? Or you're against the... What has been discussed? If anyone wants to come forward, please come forward. State your name and...
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Dwayne Schwab. And I'm obviously very much for the project because I've worked with Ron over the last six, seven years. And I think it's imperative that we need to bring good retail into Dickinson because we have them. I mean, if we lose this opportunity, we also lose... I mean, as many people that are going to Bismarck shopping now, I mean, they're going to... I just don't know what we're going to do. I tried to buy an umbrella today to... Because I watched my grandson's football game yesterday in the rain. Can't buy one. It's unfortunate that we have such limited shopping. And I just hope that you will see this opportunity to help our community. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one else from the public, we'll close the public hearing. We'll reopen the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Mark Grove. I'm president of Great Plains Clinic Medical Enterprises. We own the Prairie Hills Mall.
Mr. Raden?
I guess when I look at it, buying the mall eight years ago, we took on 75-year leases with Kmart, Herburgers, and JCPenney's. And when you buy these developments and you try to develop these, you find that your hands are tied with the income stream and the cash flow that you've got coming through there. You can't develop them to the level you'd like. And when we had the opportunities to develop them, it was to have to buy out tenants or watch them close or go bankrupt. So we bought out Kmart to get Cash Wise in there. You do multiple LOIs with tenants. You might have Raden's group. You might have Roar's group. Everybody fighting for the same tenants. But those tenants come to you when the numbers meet. The numbers have to meet for us. The numbers have to meet for them. If they're 8 million dollars in the hole, to me, that is a business expense that they've incurred. I had to incur extra business expenses to build a strip building in the mall parking lot, to dig eight feet deep to get the footings just right. It was an extra $800,000. These are just normal business expenses if you want to be a developer. But to start asking for private development, to ask the city for money, I guess when I've spent $2 million on the parking lot, I would have liked some money from the city. Upgrading all of our lights, trying to bring in tenants, spending $800,000 to bring in other tenants for tenant improvements. You know, these are things that we have to deal with, with this horrible retail market currently. And, Mr. Steiner, you talk about how the store or the mall is so poor. We're a landlord. We have absolutely no control over the retailers. So if we complain to Herburgers, or to JCPenney's, or to any other store that's a national tenant, we have no right to talk to them about anything other than their rent. We can't control how well they manage their store or they operate it. So when you listen to four different stores-
The comment was, right now, it's struggling. I mean, it's struggling.
They are struggling, but those are the dead stores that should have been dying. They're the old stores. They're gone. There's new ones to come. But you can't depend on just an LOI being signed. When we built our strip building, I had to have three leases in hand before I built the building.
To reference your parking lot, we're not building them a parking lot like you invest in your apartment. We're investing in the road that goes out to these businesses.
Understand that.
Just like we do Highway 22 and 15th.
But what they're asking you to do is to take on a huge trust in a lease that's not here, in four stores that may or may not have successful operations and successful sales.
They aren't asking for any more than what Roar's asked for, for their development out there.
Well, we've been there for how many years and have been paying taxes at a great length? And there has been specials, increases, everything. I guess I'm looking at it as your private developer, you take on your costs. You own them, you develop at your own cost.
What specials increase have you taken on?
Well, my taxes went from a little over 100 up to about $255,000 a year.
For the mall?
Yes. You can take a look at it. I'm not, maybe I better take back specials.
Not city specials?
But the city taxes have risen incrementally for us.
Not city specials. We don't have many specials out there.
Well, I'm just saying you're taking on a huge amount of trust, and that all of this is gonna fall into place the way it's being presented, considering how many tenants we've dealt with, including the TJ Maxes, including the Dollar Trees, including the shoe stores. We have leases that have those stores as exclusive restrictions for having them come in the mall. So there are some of them that we've had to pass on because Cashwise lease, Boot Barn lease, and some of the other leases. These are things that people in the community and maybe the city commission, you're never gonna know these things. These are internally driven in the retail world. So I guess if you're gonna start looking at it, I would be asking for contracts or leases signed before money's gonna be given. Because you need to have something in writing before you just go on somebody's word at this amount of money. That's my opinion.
Thank you. And I think that was part of the discussion with the amendment to the development agreement. If we did approve this, am I correct?
We'd be the lead, right?
It, I don't know that it has been yet, but it could be specifically addressed in it. I would just follow up on, I believe Mr. Kubis had clarified the Roar's related expenditures previously, but I don't know if you wanted, my understanding is, when it was discussed at the last meeting, Roar's had requested a clarification on that.
So on the Roar's, specifically on the West Ridge development, north of the interstate, our records show that the city had made a payment to Roar's for $400,000. I believe that payment was to help defray the costs of borrowing utilities under the interstate. Those utilities didn't service the entire area that they were anticipated to service, and we show a count receivable back from Roar's in the amount of $207,500. Haven't been able to exactly track that down. It seems like an odd amount. I think everyone kind of remembers the $400,000 amount that was requested by Roar's. And then also that there was to be some repayment. That number, $207,500, doesn't necessarily ring a bell with me, although it might with others. That's as much as we know through our finance records right now. There had been some money that had been given to a developer to help aid in construction.
Would this become a CIP item? Would the city be the lead on this? We wouldn't just write them a check and say, build the street?
My personal opinion is that, yes, it should be. It needs to be. In my opinion, that we're using public funds that the project should be bid, and go through our process. That wasn't necessarily always the case in past practice, but that would be my recommendation.
Okay, anyone else from the public? This public hearing is still open.
Hi, I'm Tracy Toos with Toos Construction, and I own a little bit of land and a couple retail stores in Dickinson. I guess I agree with both sides, with Mr. Grove, with the mall. I've competed against Mr. Roar's. I've competed against Ron on this land, and thanks for getting it, by the way. But, you know, new retail's gonna spur more retail. Do I like that time has changed from '12 and that the city's gonna have to go in their pocket a little bit to build a road? Not really, but the time has changed. In 2011, to get Halliburton and Baker Hughes here, I had to spend $6.4 million to put in three roads. But it was all in the cost of the development and the land that I got paid for. Little different time, little different place. I like your approach, Mr. Steiner. If there is some holds on when that money can go and when that development can go in, and leases are proven, I would be for it. The mall's only gonna get more tenants if we have five new retail stores out there and other people coming in. I'm gonna be busier at my retail stores. Hopefully, I don't get beat on the roads. I think Martin already beat me. But it is good to bring in more retail. We're hurting for retail tremendously right now. I don't know what we can do to bring other people here, but if Raden's gonna sell Dickinson, hopefully they bring four or five tenants to the mall, fill up Roar's subdivision over there. I don't want your wife to stop filling gas at my gas station, though. Doris still go to Bismarck a lot, okay?
All right, anyone else from the public? No one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, final discussion here. You need to make a decision on where you're at. Or, I guess I would, if there's no further discussion, then I would look for a motion, but I, at first, I would look for further discussion on this item. But if there is none, if we've made up our minds, if you've made up your minds-
Mr. President, I think we need to move on one way or another. So I'm gonna throw a motion out there. We pass, we pass, we fail, we move on. I'm gonna move that we approve going into contract up to 1.376 for the billing of the Fairway Street as stated, and this is gonna have to be drawn up by staff. It's what we discussed here. And that's gonna be my motion. I make that motion.
Okay. Can we, can you, can I offer-
You can add, yeah, please do, please do.
One, we need these leases. Part of this being contingent upon the production of the leases. Because Mr. Raden said, if this is approved, he will have these leases.
That'd be fine.
The leases do not, and I don't know what the appropriate amount of time would be, the production of these leases are presented to the city. It is 60 days, 30 days too soon. Gentlemen? Could you please come up to the mic?
My question for you is that with the execution of the leases and also the modification of the development agreement, would we want those done at the same time, Craig?
I think that might be helpful, because there might be things in the leases that we're made aware of that may contradict something in a development agreement that's already approved. So probably even seeing the leases before the amendment would happen to the development agreement, I think would be appropriate.
I'm just thinking out loud because initially, we were going to sign the leases subject to the funding of Fairway. Let's just make it simple. So now, knowing that the city is willing to cooperate and help us with the infrastructure, I'd like to move forward without throwing that verbiage in there. So it will expedite the signing of the leases, so I can think I can get that done sooner. One of the leases is already signed, so that can be done sooner, so I think I can have that done within maximum 60.
That's really up to the commission if they're comfortable with that timing.
I need to know how long, or we need to know how long staff needs, I mean, timeframe-wise. I mean, if they provide it within 60 days, you'll have to review. And then, I mean, 60 days from now, and then we have to go into the, we want to get into the bidding process this fall, right? You would like to?
Well, fall, winter, more than likely, early winter.
I gotta talk to Cam, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, from the moment, if we're discussing contingencies, from the moment the leases are received, this is not a to review the leases, turn around a development agreement within two weeks type of thing. The city staff need time to review the entire picture. And I will say that 30 days is pushing it. So if you're talking about doing, that's three months, and it's September. So December is when you would be looking at finalizing those items. So I don't, and then with the bidding requirements, that's advertising three weeks before a bid. So realistically, you're not going to be bidding and getting a bid back until at the earliest the first quarter of 2019.
That's absolutely correct, and I think we understand that the construction of that road, probably Canton wouldn't be in, or I shouldn't say road, but utilities and public infrastructure wouldn't begin until the spring. That's just, it's a short stretch of road in a wide-open hayfield right now. It's pretty easy construction, so I don't see that being a problem for August, September start date myself.
And we are gonna have control of this. We will bid it. We'll control, the only thing basically we're looking at is even the design, I guess. The design would be ours, too. Because there's no roundabout anymore, so.
Typically, what we've been doing, I'd say the last couple developments that we've done, Prairie Creek residential developments, they hire, they, the developer hires and pays for their engineer plans approved by the city. In this case, I think we should bid through the city and then also inspect, and Mr. Raden and I talked about that, that the city would hire the inspection team. His engineers, his design engineers are from out of state. Probably isn't economical to have those folks come up and spend a lot of time out of town inspecting where we'd hire a local firm to do that inspection. And that's typical to all of our more recent development agreements. That inspection will be handled by the city, probably through a subconsultant, but then paid for by the developer.
But we can make the amendments to your motion that this is contingent upon the deliverance of these leases. And is there anything else, Mr. Kubis, or commissioners, that we need to add?
The development agreement?
What's that? The modification of the development agreement? Anything else, Commissioner?
And I believe Mr. Raden had a clarifying point as well on that.
No, I was just gonna say about, as far as the construction, we were assuming that the city would do it. We've already got all the civil drawings done. So the drawings, as far as the engineering, could be transferred over to the city. If you guys want us to bid it out and do it, we've got it already bid out. Tracy's back here, he's bid it. It wouldn't take a lot to sit down with Craig and go over it, and you guys distribute the funds out. We could work that out, though, with Craig. If you guys want to do the whole thing, or if you want us to bid it out, so it doesn't have to go out to an RFP.
Yeah, I think Mr. Kubis is-
And I'd like to sit down with Attorney Murtha. We have done other projects in the past. I'm talking 10 years ago, where there was bids, but bidding happening, you know, publicly bid through a developer. And, you know, I think if we're at the point where we have approved plans, contractors, local contractors that are interested and familiar with the project, I really think it's in our best interest to bid that work out publicly at a city bid letting. With the understanding that if the plans are there, it's a three-week, maybe call it a month delay before we could enter into a contract with the contractor. A lot of those things that we've struggled with in the past on developments, getting the bonds from developers, this to me puts it in a much more, from a historical perspective, a much more natural state of owner-contractor agreements, where the contractor just provides the bond. They might have a bond provided to Raden Development, but then we have a bond as a city, as it's going to be our infrastructure, you know, forever.
That we'll have to approve and accept.
That we would have a bond, and we've even been able to do it where the contractor provides a bond to a developer and basically has a rider, and the city is a rider on that bond, where we're an additional insured party through the bond. There's ways of doing it, but it's nice to have that contractual agreement with the contractor. So we're not just kind of a third party that's looking on from a distance.
The good thing is, it's already been designed, like I said, with city spec, and we can get that to Craig immediately. As far as leases, I don't know why we couldn't share them with you now. Like I said, we've already got one signed. I haven't signed it until tonight. The other three are just getting pushed through.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Raden. Any further comment? We have a motion on, to approve 1.376 with amended development agreement and leases, providing the leases to us. This will be city bid, road, this is our infrastructure. So any other comments?
Mr. Decker, what are your thoughts on the project?
Pardon?
She asked what my thoughts are.
There's a motion.
Still discussion.
Yeah, I'm still open for discussion here.
The motion has not yet been seconded.
The motion need a second, then you have a little more discussion?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, and now the discussion. I feel we need the retail, but I'm, I need guarantees. And Mr. Raden has, so far, said there would be guarantees. The only thing that I'll say is that there will be no leniency if the contract is not met, not from me, anyway. And I expect the negotiations that Mr. Kubis told me that to, on the fines levied on the Drainage Way, will be taken care of before all of this. And they have not yet.
No, Mr., sorry, President Decker, and I believe Mr. Kubis had the last, very last conversation with regards to those fines, but my understanding is that there is a consensus between staff and, I wanna say, Mr. Raden's group, I should say, for the payment of the fines. And if the commission would have to, it is for an amount less than the total fine amount, so the commission would have to approve.
Approve it.
Yes.
And can that, that can be brought to us next meeting?
Uh, now.
Do you have a total?
We do. Last week, we had meetings and discussions with other members of the executive team, and we had come to an agreement on a fine of $60,000.
And there, Mr. Raden's team is amicable?
That was our discussion last week.
Yes, we were gonna go ahead and approve that.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, well, we have Mr. Steiner's motion right now with a second, and then we'll deal with the fine right after that. So we have Mr. Steiner's motion with the amendment, amended development agreement, and the leases provided to staff, city bid, with a second from Mr. Frederick. Any further discussion besides?
Just a comment, and I guess I look at this situation, if we can get these guarantees and put this thing into a, where it makes sense. I mean, as a business person myself, if I was asked to invest that kind of money, and I could see a four- or five-year payback, it makes sense. And it helps Dickinson grow. I mean, and I feel a lot more comfortable that we're only doing a public street. It's actually gonna be our infrastructure that we're putting in. We're not actually giving them parking lots, or grass, or streetlights, or, you know. It makes me a lot more comfortable with the whole situation than originally. I mean, we started at $9 million- I mean, we started at nine million on this thing, so it's whittled down quite a bit.
I think the contingencies being included as well, legal protections makes me more comfortable in the investment.
Walla?
I concur. I mean, in order to have the guarantees.
All right. Right.
Just for my benefit?
Yes.
That it's, and I believe I understand the intent, but I just want to make sure it's part of the discussed, which is that it's not the fact of providing the leases or the fact of amending the agreement. Rather, it is that the city staff will be satisfied that the language of those leases and the amendment to the agreement fully protects the city in the event the development does not go through as intended, such that the city would reimburse the cost that it had expended on behalf of the...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion, comments? Not will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mrs. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. You've got work to do, Mr. Radem. All right, that's the end of the... Let's see, we were finishing, we finished up, or we, you were finished with Kronos, right? Mrs. Carlson?
Correct, Mr. President.
Were we? Yeah, that's right.
Were we going to do finalize the fine tonight? Because it needed a council?
Thank you for the reminder. Well, before we move on, we'll finalize, I need a motion on the settlement on the fine. And right now, the fine amount that has been agreed upon is $60,000.
Mr. President, I would move forward to approve the fine amount of $60,000.
We have a motion to approve $60,000?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion? Now will vote, Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you. You'll be happy you did that.
All right. So we've tabled Kronos to an executive session. We have an Odyssey update from City Attorney Murtha.
President Decker, members of the commission, with regards to the Odyssey project, I have good news to share. In a brief recap, is that there had been a delay due to the fact that the alley that needed to be vacated in order for the structure to go in, the default of a vacation is that the property owners tend to split the alley, and the post office would have been the recipient of that. Originally, the intention of the parties was to have the Odyssey structure also incorporate that, that amount of land that would have gone to the post office. And so the post office was doing its due diligence on whether it could accommodate the request for that. Unfortunately, the due diligence process was taking a very long time. And so Odyssey, on its own, decided that it was going to respect that for the post office. However, it didn't want that, that do, that part of it to be delayed. They subsequently decided to, or informed me that they were modifying their plans so that they did not need to rely on that piece of land in order to proceed with the project. Just this past Friday, they submitted a revised plat that provides for the structure to go in and the post office still receiving the land that they otherwise would have with the alley vacation. It has been indicated to me that there are still ongoing discussions with the post office that in the event they were able to purchase that, that piece of land from the post office subsequent to the approval of the plat, they will do so and modify their structure appropriately. However, again, they didn't want to delay. That plat has been under review by Engineer Kubis and Mr. Hadley since Friday. It will be on the September 11th agenda for your review and approval. We are hopeful that we'll also have a development agreement on the, on the agenda at that time and potentially some other documents that were required by the purchase agreement. However, the, the most important piece is that plat approval, so those documents may come after that meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Murtha on the Odyssey development? None? All right. Good. Moving forward.
We get a lot of questions.
Ms. Hadley?
I could add one thing. I am, we are trying to expedite the process when they do get this finalized. The site plan that they submitted has some changes, and they did have on their site plan that the city was providing lights. And I'm clarifying that we're not providing streetlights to that, that project as part of our downtown improvement plan. So we are working through that as of today, and hopefully at the development agreement stage, we'll have that all resolved.
Yeah. As Commissioner Frederick said, we get a lot of questions on the, a lot.
Maybe somebody should go on social media tonight and give an update.
Any, any other comments? All right, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. We'll move into engineering. Mr. Kubis, 40th Street memorandum, understanding with Stark County.
Thank you. Several months ago, Stark County and the city of Dickinson had discussed paving the two miles, it's hard to see with the lights on, but two miles of what we call 40th Street, the county calls 34th Street, from 30th Avenue West to Highway 22. So a portion of the road, as you can see, the blue line is our city limits. So that middle mile of those two miles, we have half of that, that segment of road. This MOU would formalize the arrangement with both parties that are in the agreement, have the county take the lead on the project, which they've already began doing through some design efforts. The city has been able to provide input on that. That's a part of the MOU that we are able to review and provide comment on the plans. The county would pay for the project with the city reimbursing them in 2019. The, the project schedule right now, while not set in stone, is that earthwork would be expected to start this year, with paving, paving to happen next year. The engineers' estimate of construction costs are well within our preliminary budgeted amount that we have in our 2019 CIP program. Right now, we had $1 million as a very rough number in our, in our program. The last estimate I had seen was around $700,000 for the, for the city share. So this memorandum was reviewed and I believe acted upon at the county meeting this morning. I hadn't heard that they had made any revisions to it. I did note that there may be some revisions to the agreement based on discussion they may have had. I think their legal counsel, State Attorney Henning, was comfortable with the memorandum as it was written, so it may come back that both parties just approve this. But we may want to, and Ms. Murtha helped me out with the wording, approve this contingent upon...
Contingent upon final approval by the county and legal review.
Thank you. Staff has reviewed this. I personally recommend approval of it, but I'd stand open for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
Your estimate is $700,000 to a million?
That was, originally, we had budgeted a million. The engineer that's now working for the county, their engineer's estimate for the city share was $700,000.
I'm okay with it. It just comes back to our last issue where, you know, we're building a street out there for 1.367, and it's going to lead to something that's going to pay back right away. I'm happy to see this here. I know we talked with the county about that before, they didn't want to split it with us, so I'm happy to see it.
Well, it's a definite improvement. It's, I mean, for all the residents up there, that vote is... Any other questions for Mr. Kubis on this MOU? Now I look for a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the MOU with a second.
Subject to the contingencies?
Subject to the conting...
Subject to the contingency.
Any further discussion, question? Now will vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla? Chair votes aye. MOU is agreement, approved. Trail Task Force, Mr. Kubis?
Thank you. Through our Trail Task Force, which was put together as one, you know, to follow up on one of the commission's goals of trails and sustainability, through several meetings this year, it became clear that the connection to our Crooked Crane Trail really rose to the top of the list as the project that that task force would like to see move forward next. We're building one in town right now. So if anyone isn't aware, the Crooked Crane Trail Phase One project built a 1.8 mile loop in what I call the park area, just north of the beach, north of Patterson Lake. The connection that we have planned, really what was hoping to be twofold, and you have a handout at your desk with a task order? On the last sheet of that, if you wouldn't mind going to that, it's kind of a close-up of, of what's on the overhead. And there was two connections that we looked at. The north connection goes around the Dickinson Dyke, around the golf course, and connects to that Phase One of the Crooked Crane Trail. You can see those concrete, kind of two loops of concrete paths in there. The southern connection, again, it goes from State Avenue, follows an existing county road for the most part, and, and would end up at, there's a south boat ramp on the south side of the lake and a small picnic area. A lot of this would follow an existing roadway, and through discussions with, with KLJ, we found that that is a specifically prohibited item was, is paving of roadways through the Outdoor Heritage Fund. That is what we hope to be our main funding source for this project. Outdoor Heritage Fund pays up to 75% of a project cost, and it was used significantly in Phase One. So on the southern connection, we may look at that as a future phase, and maybe for this phase, do some signing of that, to call it the connection for the Crooked Crane Trail, sign it for bike usage, and, and mark it as the Crooked Crane Loop. But right now, we're not looking at doing any path improvements.
Where it cuts across that field, Mr. Kubis?
Yes.
Is that, is that parkland? Of course, that's private there, isn't it?
It's private land, right. And that, that's another one of the potential hindrances to developing that southern portion. If we'd followed the roadway, when you get to the lake, it gets very, very narrow, where it'd be tough to put a trail in there. So the thought was, maybe we just sign this roadway, put lower speeds on it, and sign it for bikes. I don't see a lot of walkers, maybe some joggers that are more ambitious than I might use it, but I see it mostly used as, for bikers that are heading out to what will be a more rustic loop, because the, they have another committee that's working on a trail to go all the way around the lake.
The backside, yeah.
Right. But with a, with a, what I call, you know, a very natural appearance. We're, we're looking at asphalt, potentially concrete in some areas for the surfacing of this north connection, where they're just looking at a mown path with help, you know, getting beaten down by, by bike traffic, really, so. So the task order itself with, with KLJ, that's before you, we've negotiated with them and really trimmed up some of the scope, just to ultimately put an application together for a successful Outdoor Heritage Fund grant. Our, our big obstacle that we hope KLJ can help us out with is working with the railroad. A lot of this north connection needs to be on railroad property. That's really our only, only routing. There's places where we could dip off the railroad, but there's several areas where we, we just don't have options. So we have developed some contacts with the railroad, and we, we hope to move this forward for an October 1st application deadline. In reviewing some of our trail funds and, and the, the funding that we're budgeting for 2019, we should certainly be able to have the, the funds available to construct this in 2019 with the Outdoor Heritage Fund grant dollars. We don't have a, a great cost estimate on this yet. That's another part of the scope of this task order, would be to develop more refined cost estimate for the project. So with that, I, I sure opened it up to any other questions. Mr. Frederick might want to add to this, as he's been in several of the meetings for our Trails Task Force.
Yeah, well, you know, just in the meetings that we've sat down, it's, the connection makes sense. I mean, we have a lot of people that are looking, especially on that north connection. We'd like to see the south connection, but we're kind of handcuffed now, I guess, but they don't want us to pave roads, so, I mean, we're looking at paving that new beach road, basically, and making that part of the trail, but I guess...
It would be nice.
I guess that wouldn't work now, so.
And it might be that there's other opportunities to pursue that outside of the Outdoor Heritage Fund. It's very, a very low volume road, where I think it could be, you know, shared between motorists and pedestrians. There's probably a handful of cars a day that utilize that. But right now, it's in pretty tough shape. The road's pretty wash, forty when we drove it. So it would certainly need some improvements, but right now, we're, we're going to focus on the Outdoor Heritage Fund grant, if that's the wishes of the commission.
And, and the rustic trail connection is going to be a nice connection. They're going to sign it, you know, they're still just going to mow it, but it's going to be signed, so you know where you're at. And they're going to put some floating bridges in, I think, cross some waterways out there, so, so people riding mountain bikes will, I think, utilize it. Or even jogging, I guess, maybe, or, but, yeah, I think it's a, it's a good, good plan. The north one's going to be a little tricky with the railroad property, but I think we can work through it.
I, I really hope, and this is just my personal feeling, I really hope that this gets more children to use this area. I mean, this is where I rode bike as a kid, get out to the dyke and out to the lake, probably not on a legal path, but that's where I, that's where I went. And, and right now, it's, it's, it's still a great trail out at the lake, but it's a destination trail that you almost need to drive to, to use. Where this way, you know, get on a bike and hop on this trail, get over the, the railroad bridge safely at State Avenue, and be on a trail and on his way out to the dyke or to the lake. So we think it's going to be highly used, in, in our opinion, as a trail committee.
I think at one point, too, if, if it gets all connected, even the rustic part, there's certain runners that would run that rustic part.
Groups of street vehicles?
Yeah. You know, and like I've had some discussions earlier, and I said, just, you know, talking with the Park District, if, you can see in the lower right corner there, that's like that quarter we own, with the fire training center and a possible proposed training center with indoor range, and, and if, you know, the Park, if that would work out, if the Park District, we could put up their sports complex in that area. I think what a great jump off point, if that trail system is all connected right there, and there's a big parking lot right there on that sports complex, and people can park right there, and their kids can go to the soccer and softball, and if you're a runner or a biker, you might just want to hit the trail quick and, while they're, you know, running around. I think it's, it's just a great piece. I mean, it's, the trail system has, has been a long time coming, you know, that, and work, you know, at work, I should say. We used to have something back here, Mr. Steiner can remember, we had an old trail system map at the back of the commission. And that was probably approved before you were on the commission.
Yeah, probably.
So they've been working on this. So this is great.
So you're looking for a motion on this task order, which is $16,900?
Correct.
Okay. So commissioners, you have any questions for Mr. Kubis?
No.
Comments?
I'd make a motion to approve the task order.
You have a motion to approve the task order?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now will vote, Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Task order, the motion to approve the task order is approved. We have a report from Mr. Kubis on the Museum Drive land transfer.
I do, thank you. This has been an ongoing update to the commission, but we have successfully gotten a hold of and gotten written confirmation from all 13 landowners that they would be willing to move forward with this land transfer. So our, our next step here is to replat the property, essentially replating, you know, most of you look over here, so. These 13 small pieces shaded in white, the blue area are the 13 existing lots. And talking with Highlands, who, who we engaged last year to do this survey, probably several different methods of, of making this happen, we're trying to find, you know, the, the least costly, most efficient way of, of first creating the parcel and then transferring the parcel. But I think right... But I think right now, what we're looking at doing was making that narrow strip and these 13 small blocks a replat, where we would convert that strip of land to right-of-way, which probably should have been already right-of-way. Essentially, that's what it serves as. It serves no purpose as a city parcel, so we'd convert that to right-of-way, dedicate 13 smaller, or not dedicate, but create 13 smaller blocks, and then work forward to transfer those properties to those individuals. So I was honestly quite surprised that we would get 13 people all on the same page, even on what seems to be a pretty good deal for the folks, but it took a little while, but it got everybody there, so. So hopefully, we can move through plannings process quickly, and we'll have a replat in front of planning and zoning soon.
All right, any questions for Mr. Kubis on the Museum Drive land transfer? All right, thank you, Mr. Kubis. Thank you. We'll move on to Public Works. Mrs. Zurov, you have a couple of reports?
Yes, I have a personnel update and the Armory parking lot maintenance report, but also, I would like to update you on the reused water, if I may, at the end. First of all, in the personnel update, HR coordinator, Ms. Nomenek did talk about some of the vacancies in Public Works, but I just wanted to reiterate some of the vacancies we have. Currently, we have two vacancies in Water Utilities, two in Water Reclamation, two in Street, plus not having the Street Fleet Manager. We have one vacancy in Fleet, one vacancy in Solid Waste, and if you add all that up, that's about over 15% of our staff in Public Works. And especially at the Water Reclamation Facility, with being down two positions, that's half staff out there, so we're trying to cover the plant with staff from Water Utilities, which actually does decrease the amount of work they can do also. I just wanted to update the commission on that. We are continuing to provide the services that we need, and I do want to thank the staff for putting in longer hours and working weekends, where they normally don't, some of the staff, to do that. So I just wanted you aware, we're continuing to provide the services that we need to, as I said. And I know I've talked to you before, too, about trying to keep staff. A lot of them have gone to higher-paying jobs, and I appreciate this morning's discussion on increase, increasing possibly some pay opportunities, and the increase in skill-based pay that was discussed this morning. We are also continuing to look at our advancement program as a senior to increase some pay, and as I talked to you before, try to look at some form of positions to keep staff and work with staff.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Zurov on the personnel update? All right, we'll move on to the Armory Parking Lot Maintenance.
Armory Parking Lot, I don't think I have a slide, but I think I, there was an enclosure in your packet, where you can see at the L E C and the Armory, the parking lot that is city and county. The red portion in your packet is the county portion, which is about 82,000 square feet. The green and the light green or yellow is the cities portion, which is just over 30,000 square feet. I did have a discussion with Mr. Falsing at the county, who's apparently in charge of the buildings and parking lot for the county. They are looking at having that parking lot micro-surfaced. Apparently, the contractor that's working on one of the county highways is looking at coming and micro-surfacing the parking lot, and it does only make sense to do the whole parking lot, not just the counties. And so we had discussion on, on the cost split for this project. When you add up the square footage, the cities portion is a little over 37%, and so we had this, the discussion of breaking it as a city 60/40 split. Also, they requested that the, if the city would be available to sweep the parking lot and maybe assist with parking or striping the parking lot. They'd say we could probably run our sweepers through there for the project, and then we'll have the discussions on cost from there. Right now, if the city paid the full 40%, we're estimating that at about $21,000. If we sweep and assist with the striping, that doesn't include the striping, looking at, you know, whether it's water-based epoxy, the lay-down tape, those were some of the discussions I had with the county. We haven't figured those costs in, but I did want to update the commission on this. Couple things, too, on the National Guard and the Armory, there's some areas that aren't striped. We'll want to work with them on what areas we want designated parking. I do think it's a good project for the public, and so I wanted to give you an update. We'll also have to do a M O U with the county, I think, for future maintenance of that, which I'll probably be bringing before the commission. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov? All right, thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Move on to planning. We have a rezoning petition for Brown Subdivision. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be a second reading for ordinance 1659. It's a zone change from agricultural to limited industrial. Heard this last time. It's up on 43rd. It's basically, the next item on my planning agenda is a final plat, that can't be done until this zone change is actually approved, so. My long-winded slide up there basically states that staff would recommend approval of the second reading of 1659.
Any questions for Planning Director Hadley on this rezoning petition? Are you no questions? I'd look for a motion on ordinance number 1659.
Move to approve second reading, final passage, ordinance number 1659.
What motion to approve?
Second.
The second. Any further discussion, comments? Are you no vote? Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla? Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved on ordinance 1659.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We did not, I just want to point out, we did not hear the reused water update.
Oh, yeah, you said you wanted to do a reused water update. Yeah, we're done with that, so.
Rewind.
I apologize. I didn't write it down when you...
No, I, and I should have had it as a change in the agenda, but I just wanted to, this is positive news, so I thought I would share with, with the commission. To date, we have sold 20 million 200,000 gallons of reused water to N D Energy Services for the energy industry. That equates to about $151,500, less the 28,000 with the agreement with N D, and less 5,000 for the 25 cents now is all we have to pay for the, going through the pipeline. In the next two weeks, it looks like they're going to step up their amounts to 2,100 gallons a minute, which is 50 barrels a minute, and we're hoping that they continue with the projections of over 100 million gallons sold, which is close to our projection for revenue. They do have a couple million gallon, what do they call it, 40,000, 40K barrels, water corral set up just north of the refinery, and then a 60K barrel, which is 2.8 million or something like that, by Bellfield. And so again, they have the piping from the refinery all the way to north of Bellfield, and the water corral set up there. Everything seems to be working fine, and I'm confident we have the, the capacity in the water to provide for N D Energy Services. So it looked a little dire at first of the year for, for us, because they weren't getting started. Now it's, they seem to be moving forward and not have any other options for water for us. So I'm excited about it, and I wanted to share it with the commission, so thank you.
All right. Any questions on the report on the reused water? All right, thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Thank you for the reminder, Mrs. Trustum. We'll go on to the final plat for the Brown Subdivision, and it's consideration to approve resolution 24-2018, if I'm correct.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, one correction on this, the, it's listed correctly on the slides, but it's supposed to be the Brown Second Subdivision, so when we're talking about the zone change in the, the above one, it referenced the Brown Subdivision, because it's still the Brown Subdivision until we approve this plat. So now, it would be the Brown Second, so this resolution would be for the Brown Second Subdivision. Just a note on that. Obviously, it's on 43rd, it's on the same property that we just approved the zone change for. There was some discussion last month at the first reading about screening. I did include on one of the slides, you can see that there's a screening that's on the site already. Let me scroll, can't see it very well. The, the building on your left is actually the shop building that we just are approving the rezone for. The building on the right is the home that was developed as a family ownership. It's being sold off to a family member, I believe, and you can see that they actually did, there's an industrial use to the south of this, and these folks actually have planted a screen. If the commission so desired, we could add a condition number six to this final plat in the resolution, and really, all I'd suggest that we would do if we did anything was include more screening directly south of that structure facing 43rd. So if you're so inclined, I know there was a discussion on that last, last time we talked about this, and I just wanted to print out, show you what it actually looks like up there.
Are the landowners okay without the additional screening?
Are the...
The, the landowners, are they, they okay with the, without the additional screening? Because it's basically that, they're the ones that have to deal with the noise from the industrial.
Well, I think the concern was from a landowner to the south, if I believe, and I don't know if that person's here, but representing that company, but it, they missed the planning meeting, and so that was conveyed to the commission and myself last time.
The concern was...
So it really isn't for the property owner that's dividing it, it's for the property owner to the south.
Well, I think the concern was is that when they came in and got their plat approved, we required a bunch of screening requirements to shelter this house, and I guess they're looking at why did they have to do it, and this guy doesn't have to do it, especially now that we're splitting it into two parcels. So I can see their concern, I mean, their use is obviously a lot higher than this one little single shop, but it just goes to the fact, we really need to look at all these requirements we put on people and stay consistent with them. We're going to require a screening from industrial to residential for one person, we need to really look at doing it for everybody. We can't just pick and choose which ones we think that we should do that for. It just opens us up for a lot of questions, and, you know, why are you picking on me? Why, why do I have to do it, they don't have to do it? I just think we need to have some consistency there. I don't know, is the screening ordinance, is that actually an ordinance? Screening requirement?
Yes.
And if it is actually an ordinance, then why are we not making them do it?
Well, we, it's not that we're not making them do it, it's, there's a 50-foot area directly in front of that shop that more than likely, the county is going to make them move that approach and come directly out on 43rd, and when they do that, it would go right through that 50-foot area, but we could have them plant in that 50-foot area some trees to continue that string that they already planted on their own. And that would, that would definitely meet the intent of the same requirement that the property owner on the south did, but as you said, the development on the south of that street is much greater than one shop.
Well, it...
We're screening one shop from a major industrial development on the south, is, is basically what we're...
Well, that, that screening requirement was because this was a residential house meeting up against a higher, industrial use, so that's the same as this shop now is going to be an industrial use against a residential use.
Right.
Is it not the same? I'm just saying that if we're, if we have these ordinances, then we have to use them, or let's get rid of them, if we're not going to make everybody do the same thing. I mean, we, we sit in planning and zoning, and some people we may put offense of, and some people we don't, because we have one person that comes in and complains that they don't want to look at this building. I mean, well, there's just too many pick and choose who gets, who does what and who doesn't do what. I mean, we, we have to stay consistent with everything. Then, there's no questions. This guy can't say, well, why did you let this guy do this, because, but not this guy over here, I didn't have to do it. It, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
I think a lot of those, a lot of those conditions wind up coming from a public hearing, where there's a concern, like the fences that you're mentioning and other things. Those aren't something that we require in the fencing, but, you know, those are, those are concerns that come up, and they wind up being conditions of approval based on site-specific concerns. In this particular case, you've got a family that's dividing this shop off and selling it to a family member, so they don't have, obviously, the same concerns that we would if it was a different ownership.
I understand that, but when this guy built his house, he knew what was going to be around him. There was no surprises. So when he came in and complained that he wants a screening buffer, he knew what was going to go to the south. There's no surprise there. He knew it wasn't going to be another house. But we forced them to do it, and, but now, we're not asking this, now that they're splitting this off, we're not asking them to, to screen this house from this industrial use, even though it's the same owners right now, but someday, it might not be.
Right, and I understand, the screening you see was put in by that property owner, I'm assuming, it's on their property. The screening that you're talking about that was required is across the road, across 43rd, and you don't see it on that particular slide, but there, that's the screening they had to put in. So there's actually two rows. There's a row that they put in, and there's a row to the south of 43rd that's existing on the industrial site. So, yeah, we can surely, and I have a condition number six crafted that we could put in there that basically addresses that they would submit a plan, and that plan would be enacted prior to recordation of Brown Second Subdivision. So we can surely put it on there, and that would encompass the east side of that shop and the roughly 50-foot stretch in the, on the south side of that existing shop for screening.
Maybe the rest of you commissioners think different. I just think consistency...
Well, I think we need to be, be consistent, and we need to enforce the ordinances that we have on the books, so. Would that be your motion, Mr. Frederick, that with condition number six?
Mm-hmm.
You said it? You're amending the final plat of Brown Second Subdivision with the amended condition number six added?
Yeah, that would be my motion.
Okay. We have a motion to approve with the condition number six?
Second.
And a second. This is resolution 24-2018, if I'm correct. Any further discussion, questions, comments? I will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approving resolution 24-2018 is approved. I will go on to building code and enforcement, and this is going to be handled by City Attorney Murtha, memorandum with the state.
Yes, President Decker, members of the commission, and I apologize, I don't see a link on mine to the M O U with the state.
I don't have one.
Ours either.
You don't? Okay. There is a document that is an M O U with the state. It is a model M O U. Not sure where it, where it's ended up, but it is, it's completed and basically has the language transferring the, that'll, transferring the licensing authority from the state to the city as a discretionary act of the state, so that is the intent of the M O U. So I'm a little hesitant to ask you to approve it, if you haven't seen it, but it was on here for approval, and it's final. What are your wishes?
Oh, I think we do need to read it.
Yeah, we're probably good, it'd be a good idea. I don't know if it, are there any paper packets? Do we know?
I have it up on my...
You have it up on yours? Okay. You have it up on yours? Okay.
I can email it if you prefer.
Well, I have a copy. I just, I'm just not logged into the computer screen. Do you want me to email it to you? Do you have it, or?
I just email it to everyone.
So it is a very short document. So if you would allow me to, I could walk you through its provisions. It is the one that is the top one, MOU, City of Dickinson. So it reads that the North Dakota Department of Health, here now referred to as the department, enters into an agreement with the City of Dickinson. The purpose of the agreement is to promote enforcement of local sanitation, safety zoning, and inspection requirements in lieu of the... Oh, thank you. Oh, here's the, this hard, somebody else's hard copy. Oh, I have one, I have one hard copy. Anyway, cites the century code provisions that apply to this, indicates that this, the jurisdiction at issue would be for the licensing of mobile home parks, trailer parks, and campgrounds within the City of Dickinson, an extraterritorial zoning area of the City of Dickinson. I believe there is one within the ETZ. Another, and right now, it again is within the jurisdiction of the state. So it's not the state, it's not as though the county is already doing that. It's still within the state. So they would be transferring that to the city. Another purpose of this agreement is to provide an efficient and meaningful administration of the inspection and educational programs without duplication of services. The, section one details the responsibilities of the City of Dickinson, and again relates to enforcement. Under A, relates to exchange of information. Under B, relates to inspection requirements. Under C, and again requiring at least one inspection per year. And discussion in making sure that the inspections can comport with the requirements of state so that the city requirements are no less restrictive than the state. They can be more, but they can't be less. Investigate all the complaints and take appropriate action. Conduct plan reviews of newly constructed, converted, or extensively remodeled areas. Be responsible for providing the appropriate license applications and licenses to the owner's operators. You'll know that there is a provision taken out of their rotate inspectors periodically. We don't have enough inspectors to rotate them periodically. So they understood that, and that was removed. Provide supervision and management review of the inspection reports, and provide these reports to the Department of Health. And then it indicates under section two, the department's responsibilities, waiving the state license, and all or a portion of any license fee for any establishment for which the City of Dickinson is going to license or inspect them, and inspect them. Provide copies of any applicable statutes, rules, laws. Provide assistance in the investigation and abatement of complaints, should it be necessary. Conduct inspection activities. Provide, again, upon request and cooperation with the city, provide expertise as requested. Provide copies of, kind of relates back to the law, and any analysis or interpretations of the law that might be needed. And provide periodic review of what the city's doing. And it indicates that the city and the state shall meet at least every two years to discuss problem areas, interpretation, and other items with related, under this MOU, that this is going to, any additions or modifications has to be, have to be agreed upon by both parties, that it has to be in writing, and that it can be canceled or terminated by mutual consent or by either party with 30 days' notice. And so it is really for convenience of, for both of the parties. And that is, in sum, the term of the MOU. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the MOU? There are no questions for the MOU. I'd look for a motion of consideration to approve the MOU.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions, for staff? Attorney now will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to approve the MOU is passed. We'll move on to the mobile home ordinance.
So the, thank you. President Decker, members of the commission, this ordinance has yet to receive a number because it was tabled last time. So therefore, it is back before you for a first reading and public hearing. I will indicate that because it does affect really a very, a very small, relatively speaking, as far as ordinances are concerned, a relatively small number of properties within the city, that I suggest that at the second reading, and there may be more than a second reading, that it also be held open for a public hearing. And my intent after this evening is assuming the commission is comfortable proceeding with the ordinance, subject to any future changes, that a copy of this will be mailed out to all the affected property owners, and with an invitation to let them know that their input is welcome, and that they provide that input the next time the ordinance is read. So that you are getting feedback from the stakeholders with regards to this ordinance. So that is, that is something that will happen after this evening. Since the first reading, the definition section has been, and this is all new, so it's, there's no amendments here. This wouldn't be an entirely new ordinance. The definition section has been expanded to include definitions for not just mobile homes, but for recreational vehicles, and basically addressing camp space. The reason for that is, and kind of touched upon at the last reading, is that our understanding from the state is that while they are separate licenses, mobile home parks versus RV and campgrounds, nonetheless, they tend to coexist together. And the state does license them separately, but it is one license application. And it's a sort of a check-the-box application. Where on the top, you indicate, are you just a mobile home park, or are you just an RV park and campground? And most of the time, they are both. So what we would need to do is add in a separate license classification for RV and campground, and would probably follow a similar format in the licensing authority that allows people just to use one application and check the box for both, because that is the scope of the inspection authority that the state wishes to transfer. Other than that, there was substantial discussion and revisement of the paving requirements. And after I get through the language, Chief Seaback had put together a slideshow, which I truly appreciated, that showcases the, many of the mobile home parks at issue, and illustrates the paving, I shouldn't say, the status of the roadways within the various mobile home parks that are currently within the city. I will say generally, not to spoil the surprise, that there are some parks that are paved very well. There are others where all of their roads have been paved and have fallen into disrepair. That represents a second category. And then there are some where there are just portions that have not been paved at all. I would just, I just want to point out that in the minority are the ones that haven't, that have areas that haven't been paved at all. Actually, the majority of properties are comprised of the groups that are either all the way paved or had at one time been paved, and then fallen into disrepair, and they haven't maintained it. So the language, based upon the discussion at the last, the last meeting, is to address that, is found under Park Standards twenty-one oh four oh five oh under C. And it was our impression from the discussion last time that, yes, there should be compliance. There were serious public safety concerns because if public works, trucks can't get in to remove waste because there is, the pavement is inadequate. They can't provide the service. But even more of a concern is from the fire department, if they cannot get in there to provide fire service, or their vehicles get stuck, because the roads don't support the weight of those vehicles, then you're dealing with a serious, a life-threatening situation because the fire department is unable to adequately respond. And as Chief Seaback pointed out at the last, the last reading, last discussion of this ordinance, the fire code already requires that the roadways are sufficient to meet the, need to be sufficient to meet the weight and be able, so that the fire department can provide service. So the language there is a little bit more general, but the requirement is nonetheless there, that they be maintained and comprised of such material that would allow the service to be provided. So what we came up with in, is C, for any mobile home parks created or expanded after the date of this ordinance, all streets shall be paved. So this is new and additions. Such paved streets must meet the standards otherwise required in the Dickinson Municipal Code approved by the city engineer. For any mobile home parks existing as of the date of this ordinance, such licensees within 18 months of the date of this ordinance and duly licensed by the city must provide the building official with a proposed plan of compliance indicating how the licensee intends to meet the requirements of this section within 10 years of the date of this ordinance. So one of the directions was they should be given a sufficient amount of time. Our thought was is that this would be a very generous offer to the individuals to say that, hey, within the first 18 months, we're just asking you to give us a plan, as opposed to putting in there some requirement that says 100 feet or 500 feet every year. So just, what is your plan with meeting the requirements to bring those streets up to code so that service can be provided to you? And that within 10 years is a reasonable amount of time for that plan to be, to be executed. So that is the suggestion before you. But I would actually, before we get into discussion on the language, I think it would be helpful to view what the areas that we're talking about. And so Chief Seaback, if I may, turn it over to you, and if you'd be willing to provide the slideshow.
Thank you, Attorney Murtha. And, Mr. President, commissioners, is that the, the remote that IT guaranteed me is going to work? We shall see. Okay. I'd like to start out by saying that there are nine mobile home courts within city limits. Of those nine, only three are at issue.
Hit the lock button on the side.
The lock button on the side. Okay.
Locking the remote.
Okay. IT, next slide, please.
I think the cursor's on, if you look down on the lower left side, the cursor's on it. It just, you have to push the right button.
Okay. That's part of the problem. They're really good slides, too, commissioners.
I think it turns green.
Look at that. There we go. Camp on the Heart started out years ago as a KAWA campground. It had very few mobile home structures in it. Through the years, that's changed. There is quite a few mobile homes in the campground now. And it, at one time, of course, wasn't city limits. Now it is city limits. There isn't any pavement in Camp on the Heart. North Park Mobile Home Court started out with paved streets. The first street is partially, first two streets, I believe, are partially paved. Through the rest of its expansions, they did not continue with paving. And Heartland Homes started out as Southview Mobile Home Park. All the streets were paved. Through the years, their maintenance program in addressing the disrepair of the streets did not include them, keeping them up to the standard that the court was originally built at. One of the things I'd also like to mention is the prior language in city code, in city municipal code concerning mobile home parks, has reference to pavement and to the hard surfacing of mobile home parks. So this isn't, in fact, something new. The wording that's being proposed with the new ordinance, yes. But there was never a required, there was never not requirement that these roads be paved. How did this happen? You know what? I don't have a good answer for you. We got busy. The city got busy. A lot of things were going on. We lost track of it. There was a time that we licensed mobile home courts as a city entity, and then there was a time we didn't. There's probably not a good reason for what happened. But it's not something that wasn't in our ordinance before. You can, you can find references to pavement and the requirement for the hard surfacing in existing ordinance before this ever came up. So of the nine mobile home parks in the City of Dickinson, there would be three that we have an issue with.
How about the one behind the paragon?
That's paved. The one road going in. I can't, the city lot is not paved. That's an access point. But that's a lot.
That's paved going into the one behind the paragon?
I believe it is. I have to ask Fire Marshal Selly to refresh my memory.
Doesn't look paved to me when I drove it.
The one going into the center of that court. Was that?
It's paved, it's paved partially. Once you get to about the middle of the court, it's gravel.
Chief, we were having discussion on this a few years back. And Heartland Homes, which was Southview before, the original owner took on the streets. The city didn't want them. Okay. Now, a few years back, we were talking about, because the garbage trucks were getting stopped, and the fire departments were sinking, and ambulances had all the problems, we were talking about taking those streets back, finishing them, getting them up to spec, and assessing them back. You know, if that's where we got to go to get these streets up to par, that's something that we should be looking at. If they aren't going to do it themselves, then for the safety, the fire department, the police department, the ambulances, our garbage, and so on, we need to take a good look at it.
I don't, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. I don't, I mean, I agree they need to be fixed. I don't know if we need to own those streets.
President Decker, I think that personally, I think that's a bad idea. The infrastructure underneath is not ours. I don't think it was built to spec. We would have new streets and nobody, or they wouldn't be occupied, and the city would be stuck with the lots. Thank you.
Well, I agree that they need to be fixed. Because I've been down on A, I think it's A and B street down there. There are potholes you could lose a car in. But...
These mobile home parks also have been approached by the fire department in the past. We've provided letters to them stating our concern for all public safety entities in the response. And the letter clearly states that the road conditions would hamper or prohibit an effective response. So this isn't also the first time that they'd be hearing our concern. I think the wording, the way it's been crafted, would be fair, if not more than fair, to begin bringing this back into our house and under, under the building official, and start to get control of this again.
Now, Chief, you alluded to that in the past language, it said paved or hardened. Am I correct?
I think we have that here. It said paved or asphalt. Paved or asphalt?
Paved or concrete.
Paved or concrete, I'm sorry.
Okay. So it didn't say paved or hardened?
No.
Because hardened can be interpreted in many ways.
Right. Yeah. Pavement here. Minimum interior street width between the edges of the pavement, referenced several times. So pavement was recognized the way it was worded many years ago.
Just to make sure, we clarify that it is. It doesn't say paved or hardened.
Right.
And since we have you here, Mr. Schwenz back there, my concern is, since we've discussed this, I've visited our mobile home parks. I have some concerns on how they even got, some of these have gotten to the point where they're, I honestly don't know how they were approved. I mean, there's at least two that are extreme fire hazards.
There was a time, I can, back when I started, which was around the time that dirt was invented, we, Dickinson Fire Department... dirt was invented, we, Dickinson Fire Department and Dickinson building officials would jointly inspect the mobile home parks annually for the issuance of a city license. And I think Mr. Schwintz maybe has better history on this than I do, but there came a point in time that there were changes that had happened, I believe maybe at the state level, that, that changed things and took it literally out of the city's hands, for whatever reasons at that time, put it in the state hands. And we still had what we could do with our codes, with the fire code and so on, but there was a degree of control that was lost. And we're trying to regain that again and have a bit more control of what's happening within our community.
The state statute very clearly indicates that, as it reads currently, that it's the state's responsibility to do these inspections. It is only by agreement that the city is allowed to do the inspection. So the state did take that jurisdiction away, apparently at some point, from municipalities.
So with this, we get all our power back? With this MOU and this ordinance?
Yes.
What would we be requiring? A full, I mean, city street section, like we require in every subdivision, or?
I think what we've talked about, there's already a width. Requirement in the code that we have today, I think it's 25 feet.
Correct.
No curb and gutter, I don't believe, with the requirement for two spaces of off-street parking on a driveway, on a paved driveway. What we had talked about was requiring our minimum street section width, which is four inches of asphalt on six inches of gravel or six inches of concrete, still at the 25-foot width, because really, on a typical residential street, which all these are, you know, it, there's a lot of, lot of homes in Heartland Homes. So the residential traffic is really comparable to what we would see on any other street. And what we found is really garbage trucks that drive the need for some pavement thickness out there. And those garbage trucks are making the same trips on these streets as they are on any other section. So what we've adjusted for the, for the mobile home parks is the width maintaining the thickness.
Any other questions for staff on the, the ordinance?
What do we, I mean, do we have a, do we tell people that live on private drives how we want their private drive? Like, let's say Smokey Hollow. Do we tell them how they have to pave that when they repave it?
You know, probably not on Smokey Hollow Drive.
I mean, there's like four private drives right off that.
Right. I, I can't say that there was any requirements when those were constructed. We did go through and, through the PUD, trying to prove some minimums for the private drives like Sundance Copes, and I think some of those got smaller than they should have been. But as far as pavement thickness, though, yeah, we approved their engineering plans. Those, those private drives, you know, from maybe the 70s along Empire Road, we probably didn't have a, a requirement at that time.
Commissioner Frederick, it would be addressed by the fire code today. Whether it's a driveway or whether it's a private drive, it is, if, if it serves as a fire department access point or access road, it falls under the requirements to give us that access.
I understand that, but do we actually?
We do. We, to the best of our ability today, we do.
And I, I think all those are, they're all paved.
And they are.
Shady Lane, Sleepy Hollow, they're all.
They're all paved. I'm just wondering if we, if they just have somebody come and pave them and, or do we actually tell them how we want them paved?
I'll just, I'll just offer that the reason that the language was crafted the way it was, subject to meeting the, otherwise we're meeting the requirements of the code subject to approval of the city engineer, was to, instead of putting specific specs into the code, allow for some flexibility that might be necessary given the particular area that might be involved, so.
That runs into the next issue, though. What if Craig isn't here in five years and the next city engineer wants something different? I mean, I think we have to have some kind of spec, if that's what we're gonna require, that we're gonna stick to and that everybody's gonna be on the same page with, otherwise it could vary from person to person.
Well, I'll just say, there might, there has the potential to be some, some serious hardships for some of those property owners, given how, I mean, I think there would be significantly more financial hardships if, if you aren't allowed to kind of look at the area and take that into consideration.
Mr. President, Commissioner Frederick, you know, as far as standards for construction, we probably, we, we relied loosely on the construction standards that were provided by the engineer that we used at the time, which was KLJ back in the 90s and early 2000s. We adopted many of those same standards and really have changed very few. You know, we've done a review this year. We did, we updated some standards. I think it's a, it's a living document. We, we update our ordinances constantly because things come up, economics change, whatever the answer might be. So, yeah, the standard for, for paving roads might change in 20 years. That, that happens, but I think here it's, it's, it's holding those folks to the same minimum thickness that we would be wanting to see on all of our streets, because the same vehicles travel on those streets and needed travel, the garbage trucks, fire trucks, and then the residential vehicles.
I'm totally fine with that. I'd rather it say that it's gonna meet minimum city standard than just to the discretion of the city engineer. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, I, I don't want to have that discretion.
You might get a different job in two years and some new engineer comes in that might have a totally different thought on this product deal.
It, it, it really should be to the standard, whatever that adopted standard is at the time, not necessarily at the discretion or the approval of the city engineer. That, that probably is fraught with issues, or could be.
It does say as otherwise required by the code.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it does say, you know, otherwise, yeah, exactly what you just stated. So the code is there.
And I haven't read the new code. I, I know in the, in the old code, it referenced a width and some parking, off-street parking requirements. It just never touched on the thickness, and that's what we're trying to, to establish. And I really couldn't come up with a great reason why we would require less on those roads since they carry the same, theoretically the same type and amount of traffic as a quiet residential street.
Now, I will say this about the private drives. Art garbage trucks don't go up the private drives, if I'm correct. Not all of them.
But I mean, fire trucks do.
Fire trucks do, yes.
Ambulances. That's what I'm saying. I mean, if Smokey Hollow hires a contractor to pave it, do they actually call you up and say, this is what we're doing?
I haven't got that call.
That's the point I was trying to make. I mean, so if they just hire, these guys just hire some paver to come in and pave it and not tell us?
Well, they do have to provide a plan within 18 months, so.
I mean, 'cause this is all private streets, right? We don't own any of this stuff.
Everyone except for Carol's, which would probably not, they wouldn't fall under the requirements of, of city's street specifications for the city streets.
Okay, any other questions for the chief, fire marshal, Mr. Schwintz, Mr. Kubis, Mrs. Murtha, Mr. Zeroff? Your suggestion, Mrs. Murtha, of the, having the public hearing?
A second time.
A second time? I think would, we do need that, because I don't think there's anybody here right now. So.
I think once we give them a letter with this, we're gonna have some response.
So, but, thank you.
Thank you.
You, you're done with your slideshow, right?
We are.
I, I would hate to see you, you know, have, put together this great slideshow and not complete it, so.
I would hate to have to try and use this remote again.
Thanks, guys.
So, any questions, comments? If not, I'd look for a motion on, this should be 1661.
Yes.
Ordinance 1661.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on 1661? Now we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum? Chair votes aye. Motion to approve ordinance 1661. We'll have the public hearing, I guess, the second time through. There is no one here. And then we're done with timetable. We will move on to item 10, 'cause I think we have somebody patiently waiting for item 10. Public issues of city concern not on the agenda. You have any public? None? All right. Public issues of city concern on, not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concern. All right. No one's coming forward. We'll close public issues and we'll move on to commission. We have a, before we go into the reports in executive session, Commissioners, do you have anything? 'Cause usually we reserve that for Commissioners, if they have any items they wish to discuss.
Maybe a bathroom break.
Well, you'll get that before the executive.
Before we go to executive.
Yeah, okay. We'll go, then we'll, we'll go into the reports for, we'll go into the reports for the, the GOS update.
Yeah, we'll try to make both of these reports very brief. With the GOS case, I previously reported to you that summary judgment had been entered at the district court in favor of the city, and that I would report again if there was an appeal forthcoming. So actually what happened was a stipulation for dismissal. So this matter will not be appealed. It is final. Judgment for cost was entered. It was just costs relating to various filings, which was less than $1,000, and it has been paid. So this matter is complete.
Any questions on the GOS? Okay. City administrator search update.
With regards to this particular search, again, I will try to be brief. The packets with regards to candidates for your review will be sent out hopefully within the next week or so, I believe. At the September 11th meeting, Mr. Beisinger will be joining us at the meeting. At that time, you will go into executive session to discuss the applicant material that is required, actually because of a state law that was passed last session, for anyone in the audience, for their benefit, under 4404-18.27, I believe it is. It makes applicant data confidential, and this is just for all of you who are going to be receiving this confidential information in advance of the meeting, that information is confidential until finalists are designated. So the purpose of the September 11th discussion is to designate those finalists. After you do so, only the information relating to the finalists are going to be open to the public. Anybody who has not, did not make the finalist designation, their information will forever be kept confidential. So you'll be able to designate your finalists, hopefully anywhere from, you have, you can do it, you can go from three to five. I would probably, maybe err on the lower end of that. Then the interviews are currently scheduled for, I believe there is going to be a, a public, public meeting on the 18th, interviews on the 19th. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. On the 18th, it's a meet and greet of the finalist candidates, which will be from 6:00 to 8:00, and that will be held at the library, the community room of the library. And then on the 19th, we actually do the interviews with the candidates. And a schedule has already been set for the interviews, and I believe that was all sent out.
And my understanding is that interim city administrator Carlson, also on the meeting on the 11th, will be discussing with you the options for the interview format, because there's, there's two potentially, possibly three different ways you can do it. So that, that format will be finalized on September 11th as well. And that concludes my update.
All right. Any questions on the city administrator search update for Mrs. Murtha? If not, I would look for a motion to enter executive session.
Oh, bathroom break?
Well.
Did you wanna do that before?
No, we can do the bathroom break before we go into that, so. So I thought we might have to get set up for executive, so we could do that during the executive.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll take a break and then we'll come back and get into executive, so.
Unless you want me to, I'll go to the GOS thing.
Thank you. We're, we're back, we're back in the regular open session of the meeting. My request is, it indicates the Percol update is first. However, on, on both the Koenig and the Windy Boy Brew update, we do, the same outside counsel has been assisting, Brian Schmidt from Smith-Porsberg, and he is available and was going to call in. I just have to actually send him the call-in information now, 'cause that was kindly set up as a conference call today, which is very exciting. So I would ask that we handle those two cases first. I will say that unfortunately, and I realize that it's very inefficient, but we have to go in and out of executive session for each case. So the motion for the first one would be for the executive session to discuss the Koenig update pursuant to the statutory references referenced in the agenda. We would go in, Mr. Brian, his last name, it's just been a long day. Brian, whose last name? I'm trying to remember. Schmidt is going to call in, join us for that executive session. We would then exit, go back out, and come back in for the next case, so.
So I would look, we're going to rearrange. The Koenig will be first, Winboyd Borough will be second, and then we'll go to Percol, Kubis, and then Cronus.
Yes.
Cronos. So I would look for a motion to enter executive session for attorney consultation pursuant to 44-04-19.1, paragraph 2, and 44-04-19.2.
So move.
Second.
Motion to go to executive session with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll move into executive session. All right. Video is on. We have, as a city commission, provided guidance to our legal team, and they will proceed with discussions with.
I can just say, you can just say, you provided us guidance.
Okay. Provided you guidance. So we will move into our second executive session, which I would look for a motion to move into executive session for attorney consolation, consolation pursuant to regulations on the Winboyd Borough update, so.
So move.
Have a motion to move into executive with a second. All in favor? State aye.
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 And all disindicated for attorney consultation under the 4404-19.2 and 19.1.
Okay. Okay. So we will be in normal session, and we have just received an update on the Winboy Brew complaint. And our attorney has provided us with the information that we need to, to know about this case, and they are gonna go forward.
Yes.
So we'll now move into executive session for attorney consultation pursuant to 44-04-19.1, paragraph 2, and 44-04-19.2 on the Percol-Kubis update. I would look for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will move into executive session. Okay. We're back in regular commission meeting session. We have received an update on a court case settlement, and we have.
At this time, we're requesting, staff is requesting, recommending approval of the proposed agreement between the parties and requesting a motion.
Have a recommendation to, or a request to approve a settlement.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms.?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to approve the settlement passed.
Thank you. For the final item on the agenda, the authority to go into executive session is actually different than the ones, well, no, I take it back. It still falls under the definition of attorney consultation, so.
We have executive session for attorney consultation pursuant to 44-04-19.1, paragraph 2, and 44-04-19.2 in regards to our Cronus contract termination.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to move to executive with a second. All in favor? State aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are moving into executive. We are now back at the normal commission meeting. We have been provided information on our Cronos timekeeping contract and given advice to staff to go forward from here. So, and they will keep us up to date on the status of that contract, so. That's the last item. So I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Second, we want.